I'd like to reconvene the May 20th Commission meeting. I will call it a order, call a roll, please.
Stevens.
Here.
Agee.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a call.
We do have a call. Okay, first item is the invocation. Do we have someone or we're gonna do the Lord's Prayer?
We do not have one that's supposed to.
Mayor, please stand.
Could I do something a little different this time?
Whatever.
Just a little. If you all would see, instead of doing the Lord's Prayer, this community's been through quite a bit, quite a bit, so I'd like to have you all join me in the form of, you know, the words, but I'd like to start out by saying, "I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free, and I'm proud that you and I can be with his that gave that right to me, and I proudly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA." Thank you. Now, join me in the salute of the flag, please.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I'll just go now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve was doing such a good job, he was on a roll there. He should play.
Well, anyone can think of their own thing.
That was good, Steve.
Thank you.
Item number one is consider approval of the agenda. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hall. Call a roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda. There is a typo before we approve that under a correction. It is not Ron Duran, it's Rob Duran. Just have a little typo there, I want everyone to be aware of that before we vote on it and let the record show that. So, consider a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Hall, motion to approve, a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call a roll, please.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Here.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Agee.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, Commission comments.
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
This is the first time I've ever had to be on the receiving end of somebody else's generosity during a disaster. I do live at the Shawnee Twin Lakes area that was pretty hard hit by the tornado, and although my home is still standing, we had substantial property damage, but the real damage, living in a rural area, is to the trees. And when we came out of our cellar, we were just absolutely devastated. We couldn't see the lake, we couldn't see the road, our whole house was completely surrounded by trees and debris. And we have had the Baptist, the Southern Baptist Mission out, we've had the Mennonite Church out, we had Lakeside Church of Christ is coming out, we've had a lady who used to live at the lake that is in the Air Force that brought a lot of people from the Air Force and reserves out. They have worked over the holidays, they've taken their vacation time to come out and work on our property and a lot of other properties in the area. We've had people from New York, California, Louisiana, all over, Tennessee, I mean, just Arkansas, it goes on and on, and a lot of local people, they work with the local churches and groups here in Shawnee and the surrounding area. And they've helped, that area itself is just devastated. I don't know how many homes in Potawatomi County were lost, but it's substantial. And just to see that kind of generosity, I just wanted to point out to everybody that that, along with our city manager, our mayor, Don Lynch, and a lot of the other city employees, I know, worked many, many, many hours trying to get a handle on this, get a plan together, and I think they've done a fantastic job, and I just want to say thank you very much.
I want to share something with you all. Just so happened that last week, I was, and I don't know how many of you all know this or don't know this, but my new Army Reserve job, I am the staff judge advocate for the U.S. Army Element of NORAD in NorthCom, and one of the NorthCom functions is at a Title X, and we're not going to get into a government lesson or anything, but at a Title X truly active-duty military level, we provide support upon request after there's been a presidential declaration of a disaster. And so, at the same time that I happen to be in Colorado, and we were doing a training exercise where we were playing as though there were two different hurricanes on the East Coast, and what we would do, we were dealing with inter-agency people, FEMA, local authorities, state authorities, the National Guard, Sunday, all of this happens to us. And so, I went to work Monday morning, and we started having real-time briefings, three times a day, with Department of Defense, the Secretary of Defense's office, FEMA, National Guard Bureau, just everyone that truly works in a real-life disaster. And we did that all day Monday, and then we started that on Tuesday, and it was amazing that, and part of what we were doing also while I was there, was lessons learned from Hurricane Sandy as far as what active-duty military could do or not do in that situation. And we were told that there would probably not be any need for federal active-duty service member play, because the local governments and the state governments, along with FEMA and the national agencies that can step in, that Oklahoma didn't really need our help. And that said a lot for us, I mean, it really, it all came down to my home, we've learned how to take care of ourselves, and we do. And if we need help, we'll ask for help, but if we don't need it, we're gonna do it ourselves. And so, I think that, you know, as we make decisions in the future, we need to remember that, because although the access is there, we didn't have to have it, because we were in place and we knew what to do. And so, I was just really proud of our local first responders, as well as the state first responders, and I think that's something that we all need to be really proud of.
Amen.
Along those same lines, I'd just like to mention that one of the people that were there helping us today was from Louisiana, and I was thanking him for coming down here and helping us, and he said, "Well, when we had our disaster in Louisiana," he said, "Oklahoma was there." He said, "So, we're more than happy to do this."
Well, I could talk for a long time about some of the things that have occurred in people today. In my mailbox here at City Hall was a check for $10 from a fella in Oregon, and you know, he just said, "Maybe this can help some," you know, in an Oregon, you just don't even think about that, but he looked up our city's address. So, there's some wonderful people in this country, and when we get down on it, we talk about how bad everything is in this country, I'll tell you what, you get involved in one of these things like we have been around here, and you'll find out this country is full of wonderful, wonderful people, and they rise to the occasion, so. Any other comments? If not, at this time, we will go to citizens' participation. We encourage citizens to speak. If you want to share something with us, you are citizens, you're paying for this building, you're paying for all the people that work at the city, so if you have something, please feel free to come forward. Okay? Ben?
Whoop.
Sorry. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Linda Peterson. My comment is really about the budget item, but since it pertains to an earlier item on your agenda, I thought I would speak during this portion of your agenda. It has come to my attention that the current budget does not allow for a cost of living or merit increases for city employees. However, you have previously approved a contract allowing for a 3% increase, and have before you tonight a contract which allows the managing entity a 60% increase in fees and the possibility of salary increases for staff. Right or wrong, previous commissions have not funded increases to contracting entities if the city employees were not able to receive the same. With that said, I would recommend for your consideration, when contracting with the Chamber of Commerce to oversee the business of tourism, only transfer an amount necessary for them to achieve their budgeted plans and goals. Currently, there is over 280,000 in reserves that could be spent on this year's projects. Therefore, they may only need approximately 50,000 to complete the balance of this year and could remain whole with everything that they had planned on doing. If that could be accomplished, the balance of the collected funds could be used to support the operations at the Expo Center, truly a mission of supporting tourism in this community. Then those dollars in the general fund previously planned for the Expo could be used to support raises, bonuses, et cetera, for the current city employees. This next year will require additional work from the entire city to devise an alternative plan moving forward. But to conclude, I would respectfully request that you give equal consideration to the City of Shawnee employees, both union and non-union, as you have given and/or will give to those entities that you are contracting with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' participation comments? Okay, item number five, presentation of Shawnee Police Department accreditation credentials by Lieutenant Jim Spearman, Norman Police Department, and a presentation and award to Lieutenant Ken King for efforts in this endeavor. Chief Frands, are you available here for that?
Mayor, I'm sorry, that was supposed to be rescheduled for the next meeting.
Okay.
We had to stick with the agenda, so.
Sure, no problem.
You can just, we can pull it, get it, require action anyway, so.
No action required, then, right? Presentation and update on the Shawnee Municipal Pool Project by John Ayers, President of the Pool Committee, and Jeff Bartley of Water's Edge Aquatic Design for Commission Discussion and Comments. Mr. Ayers?
Thank you for having us. This has been a very exciting project that we began about six months ago. The mayor appointed a committee, made up of about five or six of us, and I'd like to mention them, myself, his chairman, John Winteringer, the commission, Terry West, Nancy Ford, Richard Finley, who will speak here today also, Carrie Simmons, and of course, the city personnel, James Bryce and Jeff Garner. We began this project with three goals in mind, and that was to make the pool attractive to a broad demographic. Number two, design to make the pool as self-supporting as possible, that means revenue, and take advantage of existing pool shell if at all possible. When it came down to it, we came to final renderings, and coincidentally, we fell in love with one that does take advantage of existing shell, so that does save the city some money. Programming was our number-one priority, and that equates to revenue, and that's what Jeff is here to talk about, and he's got a slide presentation that we'd like to show you right now, so.
State your name, please, and so, speaking to the mic, it'd be great, yeah?
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Bartley with Water's Edge Aquatic Design, and I appreciate being invited in front of you today, this evening, and we, I do have a few slides to share with you, the concept plan. I had the pleasure of working with the committee over the past couple of months or so to create the concept plan, and as John said, we went through several different concepts and iterations, and came down to the one that was the committee's favorite. We also had an open house with the public, invited them to come see two or three of the plans and offer comments to that, and as well, in addition, this being the committee's favorite plan, it also seemed to be the favorite plan of the public. And this first slide is a rendering, computer-drawn rendering of what the aquatic center would look like, completed. And the aquatic center would include a variety of features on it, and as John mentioned, focus on programming. We'll have a lot of, a variety of play features on this to encourage people to come for open rec swim, which will be the primary source of revenue for the aquatic center, but it would also be designed to accommodate other programs and activities, such as water aerobics, swim lessons, competitive swimming, and other special events that you can hold at the aquatic center. And this is a bird's-eye view, the map of the aquatic center itself, and what you're looking at, let's see if this is a, let's see if I can find a laser pointer. And what you can see right now, we are saving the bathhouse as it is and renovating it, giving it entirely new look. For those who don't like how it looks right now, it's gonna look completely different, but we are saving the structure and completely redoing the bathhouse, and if you see here, this is the dash line is the footprint of the existing pool shell. So, we are saving as much of that pool structure as we can while providing the new dimensions, the new shape of the new areas for the pool. And it's going to include shallow waters, ill-deep entry in this area, it'll have six lap lanes for competitive swimming, a variety of water slides, and then we're going to reconstruct the diving basin, so you can now have the one-meter and three-meter diving ports that you had to remove from that. And then, in addition to that, we have expanded concessions and placed it towards the, well, to be the west end of the park, and the thought with the committee is that placing the concessions on the west end would allow it to operate with other events at the park. You could use that concession stand for a variety of park activities. So, that's the overall plan, a few pictures of, let's see, the, so, the features that are in it. There we go. First, this is a picture of what the zero-deep entry might look like. It'd include a handful of bubblers or sprays on it, also would include a bench area for parents with little ones to sit in the water and still be under shade. You can see right in this area, there's actually a shade structure with a little bench for the toddlers, and then the handful of the sprays up at the very top of it. Next slide, please. That's a picture of the shaded, what the shaded bench area might look like. Next slide. And then, in that shallow water area, about 12, 18 inches, we would have a large play structure, interactive play structure, perhaps with a dumping bucket on it, and something that would grab every kid's attention, bring them to that area. And then, in a little bit deeper water, about three foot, we have a current channel in this location, which would be a lot of fun for the kids to just kind of bob up and down the water and let the current carry them through. It could also be an area, say, for aerobics or fitness classes that could walk with or against the current. And then, we have an area where we have a bench with some sprays along it, in this location in the corner of the lap pool. And then, the six lanes by 25-yard lap lanes, not a huge competitive area, but enough for summer, for your kids' summer swim programs. And then, one of the parts of the concept plan that really grabbed the committee's attention was the idea of getting, fixing up the diving basin, so you could have the one-meter and three-meter board, it's too shallow right now, and we came up with the idea, instead of digging out the structure and trying to make it deeper, which would be nearly impossible to do, the idea is to raise, actually add to the wall, and raise the walls in that area and the deck along with it, and what you end up with is a pool that's elevated by two or three foot compared to the other swimming pool, and as you look across there, you'll see that raised edge with water falling over that wall, and that's really interesting, it's very exciting, that's really interesting, and it's gonna be completely unique to Shawnee. It's not the kind of thing that you'll see when you drive to next community, so, something that'd be really neat, we think, so. And we have a pair of water slides on the concept plan. This one's a open flume slide that's good for all, all sizes and ages, and in addition, another slide that the committee found to be very popular was this family slide, and it's a shorter slide with a wider slide area, and three people can slide together, link arms, it might be a parent with a couple of kids, or it might be just three buddies. And we have a couple of locations, we have room for rock-climbing walls, where the kids can swim in the deep area and then climb up the wall, and then off to the side, close to the concession eating area, we have a small spray ground area on the wet deck. And along with that, the concession eating area, we put a large shade structure over that, so people can stay out of the sun while they're eating concessions, and part of the thought, placing both those on the west side, we could fence that such that the spray ground area at least can be opened up when the pool's not open, could start early in the season or extend later in the season, be fenced that it could be open for people just to go in and out, and that's a totally, would be a choice, management choice on your part, if you wanted to extend that season. Also, could be opened up for some of those special events in the park. And this is a map of the plan for the bathhouse. Part of the process will be to improve it, make it a lot nicer than it is now, but also reorganize the space. A lot of complaints with the existing bathhouse are that you have to come through this area, and it's kind of blocked off with rails, and you have to split and go one side or the other, not terribly efficient, there's not a lot of room for staff, for, say, the lifeguards to be on break, or to have first aid area, and then the concession area, it's also double, is double duty as the concession stand, so not a lot of room there, so the top plan is the planned improvement, and the idea would be to open up this corridor so families could come straight through, hit the check-in desk, and come straight through onto the pool deck, and then they could come off the pool deck and then come back in to either of the dressing, come into the dressing rooms. And then, it also improves the staff area, where the guards and the manager's office or manager space might be, and then we have a space we can open up where we put a room in their multi-use room, could be reserved for groups or birthday parties, but also could be used for staff training. And then, the whole west side of that can be opened up for a new concession stand area. And the other benefit for reorganizing this space is that the underground plumbing is pretty old, needs to be redone, and by moving the dressing rooms, which are the, where all the toilet fixtures, all the fixtures are, we end up moving that in the space where there's actually a basement underneath, so we can have access to replacing the plumbing and not have to tear up all the floor in the bathhouse to provide new plumbing. So, this is both functional and also practical for you. So, those are the plans and the overall budget. What we estimated is 3.75 man for the pool area, and then I believe James has a half-man allocated for overall park improvements that would go along with that, parking and then other, you know, room for improvements of the park area. And then, we have, we've done an expense-revenue projection, and you have in your packet expenses, we can nail down those pretty accurately, it's based on equipment. Expenses we projected are based on the actual features, pumps and equipment that are on facility, chemical use, and also staffing that would go along with the plan. So, we project summer, the seasonal expense to be about $135,000, and on top of that, we estimate or project that you will have revenue that offsets that, so you'll be self-sustaining with this, and that's the next slide. So, and we've even created a somewhat of a model or a structure that you could consider for fees, those are not set in stone, but it gives you an idea of what kind of attendance and what kind of fee structure would generate the revenue to cover the expenses. And I think you have one page in your packet where we took this information and compared it with some of the other communities, and we call this process benchmarking, to give us an idea of whether or not we think it's a feasible plan, financial plan, that we have. And we believe it is. We believe you have a good population base, and you don't have a lot of other facilities that would be competing for the interest, and so, we think it's a reasonable plan for you to be self-sustaining.
You might both stay there in case we have questions here in just a minute.
We've put a tremendous amount of thought into the pool design. Everything that Jeff went over has potential revenue thoughts behind it. Somebody told me when we researched pools, we called people, several people throughout the country, we have some outstanding experts on pools here locally, and Dr. Fries at OBU, everybody knows, and he told me, and I wrote this down months ago, and he told me this, he said, "Programming should drive design. If it will bring more people, put it in." And so, that's what we've done, we've contacted other municipalities about, okay, what works and what doesn't work. For example, one city put in a zero entry that we talked about, but they thought it was too big, heated up the water too much, shallow water, and if he were to build his pool over again, he'd make that smaller. Little things like that do make a difference in the cost of the pool in the long run. But programming in the expenses, I mean, the revenue side of this thing, Jeff has it very low on what he's projecting revenue for this pool. I can, I made a list, half a page long, if this pool's marketed right, of how we can generate additional revenue. The kitchen can be used to the park itself and other activities take place, aside from the pool activities. Programming, again, can be defined, getting the most use out of the pool. He mentioned senior citizens. Kids would love this lazy river, but so will senior citizens and aerobic exercises, so there's two functions right there, along with the lazy river. Lap lanes were a big concern going into this project early on. A lot of local people wanted lap lanes for their own reasons, and we kind of fell in lockstep with that as we researched this thing. We don't have a true competitive pool, but we can hold competitive events at this pool. You can charge fees for these events, there's people already lined up that are expert in this area to bring people to Shawnee to hold these type of events. I'm personally pretty excited about that. Then you've got to consider toddlers and young children with the games that Jeff mentioned. So, the way we have this pool designed, and the thought process behind it, is to enable us to have so many programs available that we can turn, charge, you know, and there's other things that we haven't talked about, and you could have movie nights at the pool, if somebody wants to have a nighttime party, you could charge for that. It's just, the ideas are really endless. Jeff doesn't talk about this in his presentation, but I see that this pool is definitely gonna be used a lot. As far as the expense, like he said, the total cost of the pool is about 3.7 million, and that's with a 10% contingency fee added into that, so we don't anticipate it costing that much. And we are asking the city, we want to be partners in this project, and so, no one, we don't want to put the whole burden on the city. So, the 3 million, 2.5 would go towards the pool itself, half a million would go towards parking improvements. We're gonna need, we anticipated one lane drive going around the pool with handicap slots along the way, up against the building, and then it would pull out the other end, back behind. We originally talked about expanding the parking lot by the tennis courts, but we decided against that. Doing a little research, we kind of determined there's enough parking right now. It comes up If it comes a problem in the future, then you guys can deal with it at that time. But we think there's enough parking right now. But we do need a nice lane going through there. Some may ask, you know, is that enough to build the pool? And it's not. 2.5 will not get us a pool built. Bare bones would be 2.8. But what, we've got to build the shell of this pool, you know, the guts of it. And when you start cutting back on the pool, that means cutting back on features. When you start cutting back on features, we start eliminating who we can attract to the pool. So, it's kind of a cause-effect relationship going on there. We tried to minimize as best we could everything in this pool. And we kind of come to this conclusion, this is the best we can do. And we're very proud of it, by the way. But, we plan to go out and raise the additional 1.2 million to make up the difference. In other words, the city, at 2.5 for the pool, a half a million for the parking, the drive-through. And we don't, according to James and the other city people, we don't anticipate that costing that much. We just budgeted 500,000. So, that leaves 1.2 million that we, as a committee, plan on going out and raising. And I would like Richard Finley to come up and address that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Jeff, good job.
We, I have talked to a number of people around the community, some foundations that are not local, others that are. And I think we can raise substantial funds. The thing that, that I think we have to have from you all to do that is a firm commitment as to, as to how you're willing to participate. I, I don't think we can be successful in, in raising funds if, if on the one hand, we're way more successful than we would think. And you come in here and say, "Okay, we're going to, you've done so well, we're going to take that off the bottom line." I, I don't think we can get into that kind of a contingency situation. So, my request to you would be to, to firm up the $3 million. If we, the remodel on the clubhouse is about 500,000. If we had to eliminate something, we could, we could live with that and do it over time. Same kind of with the parking lot. So, we can skinny this deal down if we have to, and if we're not successful in, in raising the funds. I'm confident that we can do this, over what period of time remains to be seen. In terms of operating, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the operating budget, although some of that's going to fall back on you all. There are some fees built in there for family passes, for individual swim days. And, and how accommodating you want to be to the, to low-income families in Shawnee, or other residents. And, and how, how you want to set those prices is completely up to you all. But the operating costs are about $135,000 a year. So, it's not a huge number, should you all decide to, to lower the fee structure in that regard. We have talked about at the committee level, wanting to have maybe some other spray parks around town, and maybe some other locations. And, and I would hope that we could stick that in the budget, in the event that we're, we are successful in raising funds. And some of the people that I've talked to are, are so firm on that, that we, we can't get any participation from them unless we do something, say at Boy Scout Park, or maybe some of the other parks around. So, if there are any questions from, from city staff or commissioners, I'd be happy to answer them as best I can.
I'd like to make a comment right off the bat. The previous commission felt like this, and I thank them for realizing the importance of this pool in our community. As I went to my first meeting with this pool committee, I said Shawnee needs a wow. And that's owned by the city and something that people say, "Let me go show you what we have here in Shawnee." And this committee, I think, based on these things, has come up with a wow. And I think it would be a tremendous asset to our downtown, to the surrounding communities here. And the committee has worked very, very hard on this. And as the previous commission said, they realize it's very important. And as I said early on when I was running, I said, "This pool is a great thing and we've got to have it." So, other commissioner comments or what?
I think it's a great plan. I really do like it. I've heard lots of good comments. And everybody says, "When can we get started on it?" So, what do we need to do to, you know, to move the ball down the court?
I just have a question. I, I think this is wonderful. I think we should do it. But I was, I heard a $3 million commitment, and then the balance would be fundraising. But you said it would take 2.8 million to build a pool, and then a 500,000 dollar parking lot. But the parking lot is something that can be put on hold, right?
Well, we budgeted a half million for the parking lot, but we don't, we don't anticipate being that much.
Yeah.
The lane going around, the new structure, adding handicap. And it's just going from that pylon, I guess it is. And then going out the back end of the road, just a one-way lane. But we don't, we don't want to add additional parking behind the tennis court, for example.
I was just wondering whether we needed, needed to make a $3 million commitment, or a 3.2 million commitment?
Well, the way it's broken out is 2.5.
Yeah, but I thought you said it would take 2.8 to bu, to build the pool.
No.
No? Okay.
If we were asked, "What's your bottom dollar to build the pool?" I mean, if you didn't want to do the 3 point, the 3 million, 2.8, we're told, would be bare bones for the pool. And that would eliminate several features to get down to 2.8. We're asking 2.5 from you. We're going to go out and raise another 1.2 million. We don't anticipate the parking, the drive-through, whatever, to be half a million.
Okay. I was just trying to do the half.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm like Linda then. I'm a little confused. So, you want the 2.5 plus the half million for the parking? So, you want it, from the city, our part would be 3 million?
Correct.
I guess the thing that, that concerns me is when I start hearing we're going to have to cut back on things. That's going to take it away from a wow. And we, we've got to really go into this thing and be sure that we want it to be.
You know, we didn't want to come to you and say, "This project's a 4.2 million dollar project," which it is, including parking and drive-through. We didn't want to, we want to be partners in this thing. We didn't want to put that kind of burden on the city. Richard stepped forward and has indications from certain entities around town that they want to participate in this project. And I, we feel pretty comfortable we can get that 1.2.
So, we need a, what I'm hearing again is a 3 million.
3 million.
3 million for that, and that includes the drive-through. I, I know you've kind of backed away from the parking, because I came down here on Saturday, and some of you did, and counted 250 parking places within a, less than a block from our.
We originally talked about.
So, and so that, that's kind of gone away, but I, you're saying 3 million. So, if we, I don't see it, it's not on our agenda to take action on it, is it, Mary Ann?
Yes.
But you're needing something to move forward with it, huh?
We're seeking approval to proceed with construction design.
Okay. And do we need an action on that, Mary Ann? How, how, give us some guidance here.
That requires funding, construction design.
Yeah, but it.
I think the fundraising part requires a substantial commitment on your own part. What form that commitment is, I think, is really kind of.
We just have to see kind of here what we've got to do to get that done.
The commission before this one had already agreed to.
That's what I thought.
Finance the $3 million out of the one cent sales tax if necessary. So, that's, of course, I'm concerned, that's committed.
Yeah.
I mean, that's already in the.
So, do we need any formal action, James, on this?
Well, I can do it, let them.
We're not, you're not posted to take.
Right.
Any action at all. You're just posted to hear this. Now, you have a meeting Monday night.
Okay.
If you want to formalize your prior discussions and authorize, I would encourage you to authorize it in pieces rather than the, than $3 million at the beginning. But that also, I think, before you start authorizing money, you're probably going to need a report from the city treasurer and the city manager about where you're going to get even the construction dollars if they're immediately available. I mean, the, the document drawing, the engineering and so forth that you're headed toward. I don't know how big a chunk that is, but that, that's going to have to be Monday night.
My most pressing concern is that Richard and the folks that are wanting to raise the dollars have the assurances that the city's committed to the 3 million.
That's what we've got to go forward with.
What I can tell you was, is we have an approved budget that has $800,000 of debt service and interest over a, an eight-year period for construction of the pool. So, I don't know if that's what you need.
Is that 800,000 annual, that sort of?
Annual, yeah.
And coins interest.
Well, actually, that's for two projects.
Awesome.
And actually, this year, we had budgeted full debt service, and we have not spent it. So, there is money, money for designing.
So, so Monday night, though, you can come back with some sort of recommendation on how to, to do the next step. The construction design.
I'll do whatever the commission wants. In my opinion, the commission has already spoken and said that we're committed to this project. We have to finance it at some point, but.
So, if you need an official vote, let us work toward putting that on the agenda. Is there anybody here object to doing that?
That suffice to you? Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Huh?
Well, if we want to approve the budget, that's, then the finances are set up for it.
Well, so if they can get started, I think you probably want to give them a firm, yes, this general concept, go get it ready. And you can do that Monday night with the.
Well, I think Richard, to go out and raise money, and, and the other people that have committed to do it, need to know that we're committed on this side before they go out and get it.
And we do like this design, so I agree, we need to kind of lock this in, depending on what construction design.
And we've got to get on with it because of this next year.
The feedback that we got on this design was really kind of open-minded. It was very, very positive.
My affirmation is that in the proposed budget that you have, that interest in debt service for the pool is also in there. And we haven't had any discussions to the contrary during this process, so.
Okay.
Because the debt service is a fund due project.
Sure.
And the pool is one of them, up to $3 million.
Okay, so you will draft something for our agenda to make it really official next Monday night, since we'll be meeting next week. But I think you hear the consensus of the commission here.
Well, we appreciate you all under that.
We appreciate the work, y'all.
I may make one point. I think the, the two points of critical items, I think, are for the fundraising. The commitment for the fundraising, but also agreement or consensus on the plan, so we can start the process of putting together the construction documents. And, and it doesn't have to be the exact number, and there's room, you know, whether you add or subtract features there. But we, we don't want to design it twice.
Right.
So, so if we're happy with the plan, then we can start charging forward and design it. And we're not, you know, we're not going to have to backtrack and.
Under this structure that you're hearing and how we're doing this, do you see that it looks like we should be able, without any problems, to have a swimming pool a year from now?
And when that's, that's part of the issue, is that we're, we're really short on time. So, for us to, to get that for next year, we need to start the process immediately.
Next Monday night.
It'll take us a couple of months to put together construction documents. It'll also take time for the.
We need to move.
We do like the design, though.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work. You got the order, it sounds to me like. It's just a matter of us having some action with it being on the agenda in the official place, okay? Thank you all for your efforts, but now the real work starts, making it happen. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action on recommendations relating to the municipal court. Your attorney?
Good evening. And somebody took the clicker? I actually have a PowerPoint, because the report was so lengthy, I thought I might be able to reduce it a little bit. This report was prepared by me and by Judge Jones. About a week ago, Judge Jones celebrated his 47th anniversary as the judge of our municipal court. There's only one judge in Oklahoma who has served longer on the municipal bench than Judge Jones. And that judge only has him beat by about a week. But we have prepared this report together. When I came to work here a couple of years ago, things were not really how we would have wanted them to be. For that year, we had issued 3,600 warrants, served 3,300. This would clearly mean we weren't cutting into the backlog. We had 6,580 citations that year, collected 237,000 on warrants, and a total of 702,000. The court clerk was hired about a month before I was. Her two employees, one had been with us less than a year, and one about a month longer than she had. So, we were really kind of starting from scratch. And, you know, we really needed a plan. It's very unusual for the city attorney to have any involvement or supervision in the court clerk's office. But the prior commission, Brian, felt like perhaps I could help do that. One of the things that I did was I began doing the prosecutions. We were paying a part-time prosecutor $46,375 a year, so that was an immediate savings. We decided we had a couple of things we really needed to do. One was to stop the turnover in the municipal clerk's office, hire and retain, and train them. And the same thing with the court marshals. In our goal of hiring, training, and retaining, we did not very well with retaining. At, we, we made one hiring error, and then we had people stolen away from us. And an employee had to take a retirement because of her health. But we now have experienced people everywhere. The court clerk has begun her certification training, is partway through that. We've had specialized computer training for all of them. We've had cashier training. And we will start the two assistant clerks on some additional certification training. We also need to just streamline our operations and have better service. We've been trying to use our technology more. We're trying to get toward paperless. We've got some impediments to that, but we're trying to get there. We're going to remodel the office. I'll show you why in just a minute. We were having a court docket every single day, from about 3 until whenever. We have reduced that to 5, from 5 to 4. We no longer have one on Friday, which gives them a day to kind of catch up, have training. We just weren't able to do anything. Here's the current configuration. I want you to notice the lower right-hand corner of that desk, because here's the rest of that desk. You can see how tight it is. Here now is looking at the corner of that desk. That's both clerks. That's the workspace of two clerks. If you'll notice down, kind of in front of that printer, that kind of dark green thing, we have two of those. Those are the boxes that are vertically challenged clerks are standing on. They fold back up. We have had one worker's comp injury when people were moving too fast and one fell over it. There you see it folded up. But that's the extent of the counter. It has only two workstations. And I'm not getting any movement here. There we go. And this is Anita. That's in Vicky's office. You can see how tight that is. Anita is a very petite person, and when she has the drawer open and is working, no one can get by her. And in fact, I've always been afraid we were going to lose her. It's so tight in there. Another goal we had for the clerk's office was we wanted to maximize the collection of fines before things went to warrant. We use automated reminder letters. The computer spits them out when people don't show up. We're trying to use Blackboard Connect. We're having some technology issues. The new phone system will help us there and some adjustments to encode. We are taking payments online and over the telephone, which helps. We're not able to use the kiosks, unfortunately. What we're hoping for with our new phone system is that we're going to get one of those if you've called for hours, punch line. We get a huge number of phone calls. We don't need, probably 25 to 30% of the calls we get are actually from the district court. They want to know how to get a passport, how to get a marriage license, where to file their, where to file their taxes. And we would like to be able to, to not have to do that. Our next large goal was to hire, train, and retain marshals. We had only one marshal until September of 2012, when we brought on our second marshal. It took that long to get him. He actually started work earlier, but he had to go to Cleet training, and then he worked at the lake for three months. Both our marshals now are Cleet certified. They maintain their training for Cleet. We do currently, theoretically, our second marshal would have left yesterday to go to the lake. But, you know, right now, we don't really need anybody at the lake. There's no truck. There's no place for anything. Both our marshals, in addition to the training that they get for Cleet, they do specialized training with the sheriff's warrant team that they are an important part of. Once a warrant goes to them, they do a number of things before they get out in the field to serve it. They're really good at skip trace. They will find you if you're anywhere around. They will be using Blackboard Connect when we can, that that worked out. They created a door hanger, and they go to your house and hang it on the door. And then when your spouse or your mama comes home and finds it, somebody else is there to visit with you about the importance of paying your tickets. We've found that to be pretty helpful. We do occasionally run Shawnee's Most Wanted in the paper. And we started using Facebook, which is another way. which is another way to have people who are around you say, what do you mean, you're about to get arrested? I just saw it posted on Facebook. When, here's what they have been able to do since we went to two. They have cleared over 3,000 unissued warrants that were just in a drawer that hadn't been issued yet. They've increased the attempts at personal service, and they've done a lot of warrant sweeps. I'll tell you more about those in just a minute. The other thing that the marshals do, at least one of them is in the courtroom, but all times court is in session. We have had times when they had to encourage people to calm down, sometimes by placing their faces firmly against the wall, once against the floor. We do sometimes get folks in altered states of consciousness when they come to court, and they're not reasonable. We, so they really provide enhanced security for the clerks and also for the public, as you, you've been up here on Wednesdays particularly, we have a lot of people out here in the lobby. They've also started assisting code enforcement meter readers. Code enforcement meter readers are just not in the business of banging on the door until somebody comes so they can give them a ticket. It's just not safe. So, when someone steals a water meter, puts it in, steals water because they've stolen the water meter, the meter readers pull it, and our guys go serve the ticket. Here's the results. Here's where we are at the end of last month. We have issued 5,527 warrants because we picked up all those, that must, all that backlog of 3,000. We have served 4,740, 784. We do have 7,347 outstanding warrants. Of those, a significant number are more than eight years old. Some of them were not issued in this century. We'll be addressing that in a minute. We're projecting 6684 in citations this year. However, if you'll remember our earlier numbers, whereas in FY11, we had collected the princely sum of 237,000 on warrants, we've now collected a projected 407,822. We've gone from 702,907 total collections to a projected $923,379. So, I think we've made some progress, at least on that score. That's an increase in warrant collections of 72 percent and total collections of 32 percent. Going backwards here. First, it'd be smaller than the device. What have I done here, Steve? I should be on slide 18. There we go. Okay, here's what we're going to do moving forward. We want to address those outstanding warrants and uncollectible fines, payment plans, and court operations. Right now, as I said, we have 7,347 outstanding warrants. Of those, 1,497 were issued in another century. We're pretty sure those are uncollectible and unservable. The first five years of this century, we still have 794 of those. Let me talk about some of the barriers to collecting those. One is the DPS enforcement mechanism. If you get a speeding ticket and you don't pay it and we get out a warrant, Department of Public Safety is going to suspend your license, and when you go to get it renewed or you get pulled over the next time and you're driving under suspension or they won't give you a new license, you go pay it. So, we get pretty good collections on our traffic people. Poverty is one of our number-one barriers. From the first of January of '08 through the end of last month, 39 percent of our tickets were what I call poor people tickets. No insurance, driving under suspension, no tag. If you had the money, if you had insurance, you'd get your tag. You get pulled over, no insurance, no tag. You get suspended, you drive again, you get driving under suspension, and it just stacks and stacks and stacks. Some people we can't find, some of them are in jail, some of them moved away. Occasionally, we find someone who's died. One of our big problems is we do not have an alternative for substance abusers. We don't have a detox. We get, we have some folks who are kind of regular customers of ours who will never pay their fine. They will never pay their incarceration fees because they don't have any money. I'll show you in a minute what that impact can be. If we had someplace else we could put those folks who aren't causing anybody any trouble, they're just lying on the street or on a park bench or in somebody else's yard, even if the city had to pay something, and somebody could give them a cotton oatmeal and put them on the street, it'd be cheaper than what we're doing. Another, another problem we have are our payment plans. We have over 2,500 delinquent payment plans. I have to say, this makes me crazy. It, it really does. I think, and it makes the clerks crazy, and I'm, I'm sure it upsets the judge. We cannot incarcerate somebody if they cannot pay. We can only incarcerate them if they won't pay. So, you can't always just throw them in jail. We have a higher poverty level in this city than many communities, and that just makes it harder to collect. We don't, I think one of our biggest problems is we do not have a structured program for determining who really can't pay, and we need to fix that. As I mentioned, we don't have the diversion programs. Those people take payment plans and they can't do it. And frankly, we make our payment plans too easy. They say, okay, well, I'll come back in two weeks. I'll pay in two weeks, but they don't have to come back. It doesn't cost me anything to go on a payment plan, and generally, if they miss, they just get an extension or they get picked up and thrown in jail and get a new payment plan. I keep going the wrong way. Here's what I think would help us as some solutions. One of them is to formalize the process of finding out their financial status. It ought to be as hard to get a payment plan from us as it is to get a credit card. If you can pay your cable bill, you can pay your municipal court fine in the discussion. Require an administrative fee, not to, not for the paperwork, but if they go on a payment plan. Make, require defendants to make the payment plan every two weeks. They have to make a payment, and by golly, they have to come in here and tell us they've made it. And then to just start putting more of them in jail, particularly if they haven't made the plan and they come to court and they don't have a reason. The incarceration option, as I told you, is the inability to pay, plus it's at $44. Here's another number that's going to make you sit back. We have 35 individuals who owe us more than $2,500 for, for multiple offenses, plus their charges of failure to pay, plus their incarceration fees. These people are almost, with that exception, folks who've been arrested for public intoxication, sometimes petty larceny. Of the top 10 of those only, alphabetically, we, they owe us $34,296. We have collected from them $446, but we have incurred $20,198.86 in incarceration fees. I say to you again, we need an alternative for substance abusers. 20 grand to collect less than 510 people only. Some of that problem is never going to be solved. It's just not. Every city has that, but I think we could get ours going a little better, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Court operations. We have too many hours in court operations, and it's because we have too many dockets, frankly, and they take too long. That causes overtime. We have overtime every Wednesday. Some solutions, video arraignments. Right now, the judge is bringing everybody in one case at a time and reading them their rights before he takes the plea. We've had him, we've made a video of him reading rights. We're going to haul them all in here, call roll, see who's here. One shot, the judge tells them, bingo, they're arraigned. They'll sit in here till they see the judge, get them out of the hall. Somebody will babysit them in here and watch Steve's equipment. We have prepared a brochure that explains the procedures better for police officers to give out to try to cut down on the calls, the wasted time at the window, won't completely because people will throw it away and they won't read it and they won't understand it, but, but it'll help. I would like for us to further combine our dockets, go from five to four, which we've done, go down to three, and we need to start earlier. We just do. Starting at three, we'll not do it. One of our core operations problem is, of course, you saw how crowded they are, they're terribly inefficient, and they are not ADA compliant. We do have plans to remodel. James, we've been working with James on that. He's been getting quotes, and we've had, we've been interrupted. James has been a little busy last week, and at least one of our contractors has some repair work down to do at his own home, so we're being held up just a little, but we're getting there. We would like for the commission to help us by doing the following things. Authorize the judge to recall all warrants issued prior to 2005. 2005, we can throw everything away under the Records Retention Act more than 2005, and we'd like to just recall those. We'd like to have him look at these citations certified to the city treasurer. They are uncollectible, and let's get these off the books. There's just no point in showing them as a receivable when they're not. There's a process by which we can certify our fines to the district court. They become money judgment, and they can be sent to collection. We've talked to the court about that. We have a little problem with how much they think we should pay them and how much we think we should pay them to do that. But what I would like to do, if we can work that out, we get them as money judgments, I'd like to package those with the unpaid liens, the unpaid water bills, all those other stray, uncollected items we have out there. Go out for proposals, get some local firm to do our collections, bundle them, they can go to the courthouse every week with the big stack. You know, two-thirds of, of what we're not getting is, is a whole lot more than not getting anything. On the, the payment plan, we want an administrative fee for the supervision of the plan, probably $10 to begin. One of the big things is the judge feels like under the present ordinance that he has to charge them the $44 a day. We'd like to amend the ordinance that gives him the authority to either suspend or waive the incarceration fees and just charge a flat book-in fee of $50. Once the judge starts saying to people who miss a payment plan, fine, out to the safety center you go, pay or stay. My experience is the mattresses are probably stuffed with cash out there. A lot of people find it. Our nine-month marshal, we'd like to have 12 months. I think it's pretty obvious he can pay for himself from, when you just look at those statistics. The other thing that, I have, I have forgotten because it's not on my slide. Let me look just a second. We, I, I would be remiss, I really would, if I didn't thank the crew down there. They're just unbelievable. This is a lot of progress to have made in two years. The court clerk came in with experience as a corporate trainer, knew nothing about municipal court operations at all, and she had to really hit the ground running. She's done that. We have some really good employees right now. We get great help from the Sentinels. They come and stay with the people who are standing out here and tell them to take their babies outside or that it's their turn or whatever, and, and that's a big help. We're going to be coming to you in the process of ordinance revision with some other changes at the court. Our court ordinances have not been revised in probably 30 years, and they really need it. They're way behind what they're, they're currently authorized to do. So, I would ask you to, in one motion, grant all my requests, please. You know, I, I went to a thing one time where somebody showed two statistics, which were my, you know, 237 and 702, and then that second one where things had increased by 70 percent, and said, this is an intelligence test, but I won't say that to y'all. Having that second marshal and having now fully trained court clerk staff and pivoting the key. So, if you can see it in your heart to approve those other things, I'll be back in about six months and let you know how they're going. I'm hopeful that Judge Jones will be comfortable enough with that and that we'll make enough quick changes that we can do something about our docket and trial schedule so that we don't have as many and we start earlier. And I'll take questions.
Has Judge Jones been involved in any of these?
Yes, and he, he read this, we just, we had, we had a staff meeting without him, another one with him, another one without him, another one with him, and then he read this. So, yeah, it's, it's a joint effort.
So, what are you asking for?
Well, that big on list I just gave.
Here, hand me your list.
It's in your, it's in your packet. I wanted to hand it to you.
So, so there's, what about funding for like the 12-month versus a nine-month marshal?
Well, that is going to be an issue that has to come in the budget because right now, the SMA is paying for it.
No, we've moved him over.
But I believe that they, they moved him into the budget.
He's already moved him back.
But, but plus, that's, that's kind of a new position. I think it needs to be authorized.
Well, it's certainly, according to the numbers, paid for itself by putting another person in there. I mean, that's really a wise, I guess I call that a good ROI.
Yeah, we have an excellent return on that investment. We really do.
Are you talking about like starting court, like at 1:30, like they do in district court?
Yes, that would be all, that would be all the difference in the world, Commissioner, if we could do that. It really would. For one thing, when the judge first gets here, he has to do video arraignments one at a time of the people who are in jail. Oh, I know what I left out. I was going to tell you. The warrant sweeps. Let me back up. When we worked with the Payne County Warrant Team, a couple of weeks ago, they were, had a warrant for a suspect in a murder case in another county. Our guys helped with that, and we cleared eight warrants just in the course of going in places where folks shouldn't be because they ought to be in jail. Last Sunday, right before the tornado, we started at 7 o'clock that morning and had a warrant sweep between the people they arrested that day and then the people who came in because they'd left door hangers or whatever. We cleared 58 warrants one day. 58 warrants, and we got about three, about $3,000 because they, they sat in there. One lady needed 300 to get out, and she had to raise it $50 at a time. It took her a long time, but eventually, her friends came trickling in, 50 bucks here, 50 bucks there, and she got out. So, that's why those warrant sweeps have been so helpful and they're so important. They pay for themselves, too.
Other questions, commissioners?
I have a question. I just have a comment. I think you're doing the right thing, and I sit there and I, I know, I know this because I watched that lady. She knows a lot about what you're doing and what you're trying to do, and I think that we, we would be served not just from a financial, but a safety factor. We, we need to get this kind of straightened up, and I, I would like to hear some more of your thoughts on what we need to do as far as incarceration alternatives.
We can come back with that in six months. You know, I think it really is, it's a piece of the larger problem we have, not just with homeless people, but with folks who aren't able to maintain a home. Some of these folks are not homeless. It's just they can't go home drunk because somebody's not going to let them in, and some of them don't remember where they live. But they're not all homeless people. I don't, I don't mean to imply that. On the whole, we don't interact with homeless people in the court. Frankly, they don't cause much trouble, but some are homeless because they're alcoholics, and, and we see that.
Do these numbers reflect the juvenile numbers also, or is...
Juvenile numbers are in there.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Juvenile numbers are in there. Our juvenile numbers have actually gone down this year. Not sure why. Of course, we're about to hit curfew season, but they're still down.
Okay, here, if we as a commission, this is what we're voting on, right?
Yes.
You have to have a motion to approve those.
Yes, we're asking for a motion to approve those items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. You got the order?
Now you're going to vote to approve them.
Okay, let's, did you get who, Commissioner Harrod?
And Stevens.
Uh-huh. Commissioner Stevenson, okay. Call and roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Winery?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Did you say?
Aye.
Okay.
Question carries.
Question carries. Item number eight, discussion, consideration, and possible action on request by Darrell Bryan to release lien number L-12783 in the amount of $175 for property located at 528 North Union. Take a staff presentation at this time. We would love to have one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, if you're following along on your agenda, I think it's going to be on page 68 is the start of the staff memorandum. Mr. Darrell Bryan owns property at 528 North Union, and in October of 2012, a city contractor removed debris and, and, and cut the grass at that, at that property because it was found removed debris and, and cut the grass at that, at that property because it was found at that time to be in violation of city ordinance. The total lien is $175. That is comprised of the mowing charge of $30, a debris removal fee of $45, and then the standard fine or city processing fee of $100 added on to that. You see in your packet, there are a series of photographs taken of the work before and after in October 2012. Figure three includes the view of the wood ramp structure that is also noted in Mr. Bryan's email on the, on the following page. I believe Mr. Bryan's here, and so he can certainly speak to his request directly, but per his email, he has requested waiving of the lien. Mr. Bryan feels, it's my understanding that Mr. Bryan feels that the wood ramp was not trash, not debris, and should not have been removed by the city's contractor. I only have the one photograph in, in your files, the only photograph that we have of it. I have nothing else that can help shed light on the, on the condition of that. We process a number of these every year. Right now, today, we have 115 tall grass and weeds and debris cases. Yearly, we probably have around 1,500. So certainly, the contractor is, is human and may have made a mistake in this case. And staff has no objection to waiving of the $45 debris removal fee. Of course, at this credit, commission's discretion, you may also choose to remove the $100 city fine as well as the $30 mowing fee. Certainly up to the commission, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
No more questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Bryan, are you here? We'll get a comment from you, sir.
As far as the mowing, I don't know, I haven't saw no pictures, but I mowed just a few days before they say they mowed. And the only thing I seen that they did when I went back a week later was they mowed down the flowers up around the house and mangled up a rose bush, and then as well as took that, that stuff he's talking about in the corner was a handicap ramp that had been taken apart in sections and stacked up over there. It was treated lumber, but it was still all put together and taken apart sections. And that was the only thing they took, and there was actual other debris that they left there that's still laying there that I have not touched since this time. And yet, they claim that they went out and done something. That's why I don't feel like I should have been charged. I'd already went and mowed it, so they never, should have been out there in the first place. Whoever was overseeing that never sent, never went back to look after they sent me a letter. I mowed it within the timeframe that the letter said, and I was not told in the letter that I had to contact the city to say that I had mowed it. And that's what the guy tried to tell me when I called in to find out why they went out there. He said that I hadn't called to tell him anything.
Motion to release the lien.
Second.
Got a motion to release the lien and a second. You have Commissioner Winteringer and Commissioner Stevens on the second.
Release the lien or do away with all fees? What do you, you just?
All fees.
Including the administrative fee that they all started to incur?
Okay.
Uh, Winteringer, another motion?
Aye. Yes.
Yes, and Commissioner Stevens.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Call and roll, please.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
No.
Paul?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Carries?
Item number nine. Presentation by Mike Jackson, Operation Manager of the Heart of Oklahoma Exposition Center on Capital Improvement Budget, request for Shawnee Civic and Cultural Development Authorities. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you for allowing me to be here. In the past three years, we have, from the expo, have come and requested some additional monies, $100,000 for capital improvement projects. And it's definitely been appreciated. We've been able to remodel bathrooms and add some fans, lighting, and such, and it's been, it's been very big for us out there. In 2012, '13 year, we requested the $100,000 to remodel all four comfort stations, which so far, to this point, we have put new roofs, cornish on the comfort stations and still are not complete with it. We have a little over $50,000 left in there that will roll over to next year, and we'll finish that project after the, after July, which is, as you can see, listed. I'm assuming everybody has the list here that I put out for you. You can see on the list there what we lack to be done in the comfort stations on the inside. These comfort stations were built in 1989, and their need to definitely be finished, and we will accomplish them after the month of July. That's when we'll be able to get to them. That's most when contractors can get to us and everything. As far as 2013, '14, we're here again to request addition, another $100,000 to, to do capital improvements out there. And you can kind of see from the list of what we've got right there, we're looking at new, updated phone system out there. The $16,000 is an additional cost to install the phones, to get everything installed. Our phones right now, we have all kinds of phones out there that's not even being used anymore that we need to just get rid of. And right now, we pay, our contract is up on our AT&amp;T, which right now, we're paying about $2,000 a month for phones. When we get this installed in, it'll knock it down to about 700. So trying to save ourselves some money on what we're trying to accomplish here. Signage on the grounds, we have one building out there that has a sign on it that says Fred Humphrey Pavilion. Everywhere else, we have an event or anything else, really nobody knows where to go. So that is looking at putting Auto Crowsey on the building in the conference center also, signage on it, and then signage throughout the grounds of directional signage to get to the RV park and everything. We constantly having phone calls from people in the parking lot of, "How do you get to the RV park?" So we're just trying to get people pointed in that direction and make it easier for them to get around where buildings are and everything else when we have multiple events. The AV equipment in the conference center upstairs, we have two sets of AV equipment right now that we use and shuffle around everywhere. We're just trying to get this into the bigger rooms that's permanent. We do a lot of OG and E's, One Oak Mobile, and a lot of different seminars and conferences and thing that people need, that these events need the AV equipment. So that's what we're looking at doing that, and you can see the cost there. The new entry doors in Auto Crowsey, they've been there since 1981, and their foreclosures is pulled loose. They've been screwed up in the doors so many times, you can't do anything with them anymore. So this is, this is looking at putting a new entryway into the Auto Crowsey building to kind of make it look nice. We did all the landscape out front and everything else, it's just kind of make it look a little bit nicer through there and plus make it a lot more expected for us. You see these security systems in the comfort stations right there. When we have RV rallies and things like that and people down in the park, we have to leave them comfort stations open for people to go in and use the laundry rooms and things like that. Over the past few months, we've had lots of vandalism in the comfort stations and the laundry rooms from trying to get in there and steal money. They've damaged about $5,000 so far worth of wash machines and dryers. This is just a, a system that will have to have, when people are in the park, we'll issue them a card, they have to scan it to get in so that way it'll stay locked all the time. And this is the, this is the cost of putting, putting that into our comfort station. That way, we don't have to worry about locking them all the time and people being able to use them or leaving them unlocked. They can scan their card and get in and everything. You notice that we're looking at remodeling and closing in the wash racks. A few years ago, the junior livestock put roofs over the top of the wash racks, and I think with, with the amount of ag events and everything we've got, we're looking at closing them in the rest of the way, putting some heat in them a little bit, and then opening up a door from the inside. Wash racks are used a bunch, and you see people trying out there to wash in January and February and March when it's still cold, and just trying to make it a little bit easier for them and everything.
Like to wash a horse or cattle?
Whenever we have any kind of ag-related event from washing horses, sheep, goats, cattle, whatever, I mean, that's, that's what they're, yeah, that's what they're doing. You're looking at the four fans in Auto Crowsey, Section D. That is something now that can be taken off there because the Park County Junior Livestock voted to put them, to install them. So that job, that, that is one that we'll be doing here just pretty quick. Bin of hood in the Auto Crowsey concession, that bin of hood in there has been there since 80s. It's, it's, it's a homemade-looking box to me. I don't know, it don't work very well, so we're just trying to get a better bin of hood in there for these concession people. It's, it's, it's real bad whenever it gets hot and don't suck all the, all the stuff out there that it needs to do. This is just kind of a list of what we're, what we're requesting. If you have any question, I'd be more than happy. I mean, I know I run through this fast, but I know there's a lot still to do on your agenda here and everything else, so I'm just trying to, to go by here pretty quick.
Is there no security at all out there, patrol in the area to prevent people breaking into the?
Well, the police department comes through there all the time, and the county comes through there, but you just, it's just, you know, I guess it's just hard to stop anybody. I mean, like I say, they went in there and completely destroyed washers and dryers, and we have an agreement with Arrow Machinery. They provide all the washers and dryers, and we get a percentage of the, of it and everything else. But, you know, they're, like I say, they, it's becoming pretty bad.
You're asking, I think, for $100,000, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
In the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And it says there's $164,000 in needs, and then you're taking off the $38,000?
Yes, and then we realize this is over, and these prices could be adjusted. These are, these are just estimates, estimates and stuff.
You still plan to do all these things next year?
I, we would like to, yes.
Okay.
I have a question, and maybe I'm wrong on the numbers, and Cindy, you might correct me. We give about a half a million dollars a year to the expo for salaries, is that right? We pay for salaries, then $100,000 here. How much does the county contribute?
The county, just like on these, these other projects, they do contribute some, like doing hog pins. They do different things. They don't have anything dedicated, no.
So we're not getting funds from the county, basically, to equal what we're putting into it?
No.
Okay.
If they do, it'd equal up to what they've done on improvements. They've now, they've done a lot with the fans that we put in, they've bought a lot of pins that we, that we bought, just like the sound system one year, they help pay for that. I mean, they are contributing, yes.
But not $600,000 a year?
No, probably not $600,000 a year.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
Most of that, and we didn't justify that, or the county thinks they can justify it is because they get one cent sales tax, and we get, what is it, Cindy, four cents, so, three cents. So we get three times what they, what they do. Of course, most of that. And they sponsor the, what is that, the livestock show and things like that?
Well, by, by statute of the trust agreement, yes, they are to have the two events out there, which is the Park County Fair and the Junior Livestock Show.
Yeah. It, I don't remember why this has been in the budget. It's been a day or two since I looked at it, and the capital budget to get out.
$100,000 is in there.
Anything else?
I like your signage on the building. I think that's a good idea.
Signage needs to be definitely bad, yes.
Way overdue on that, I think. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, thank you.
You need him.
There is no action.
No action.
Okay. Item number 10. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on Community Service Contract Review Committee recommendations for contract with the Chamber of Commerce regarding Convention Investors Bureau. Let me just kind of start this discussion off by saying, you know, we continue to approval, the Contract Review Board continued approval of the contract with the Chamber last month because we did not have the audit required by the existing contract and we generally require, which we generally require for approval. Now, there is no indication at all that we can find that there is a problem with the Chamber's books. As it turns out, the Chamber has been unable to find an auditor. And as we were talking about it with other groups, audit, getting auditors is a very difficult thing right now. The Contract Review Committee met and quickly voted to recommend to the commission that the contract be renewed on a 60-day basis. This will give the Chamber time to find the auditor and either have the audit prepared or know how much of an extension is necessary. The Chamber has also indicated it may need to make changes in the contract if they decide to adjust their physical year to our city year. But once the audit is completed and filed, the commission can consider approval of the contract for the rest of the city's physical year. I, I think that's kind of where the Contract Review Committee was, and we felt there was nothing out of line. It's just they couldn't find an auditor. And as I talked to some other people at the United Way in Things, getting an audit, nonprofit audits is difficult, but it's my understanding now they have found one. Is that what you understand, Brian?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I talked with the executive director of the Chamber today. Sam Alexanders agreed to do the audit, and I think I was told the cost was $3,000 to do the audit, so, and she expected them to be in this week.
Further discussion?
Well, I, I see you all have a copy of this right here, and I would like to direct your attention to my letter, which is the fourth one I've written since November. And I assure you, I have more things better to do with my time, like running a business, but I'm telling you, I have, you can direct where I've highlighted the things that I need. And even this morning, I talked to the director at the Chamber, and she assured me that she would try to get me all of these things, but the fact of the matter is, I can't seem to get them. I don't think it's anything that I'm asking for is out of line, but I'm not getting them. And I've written four, I believe it's four, maybe five letters, asking for this to be completed. She did tell me today that I could contact Steve Wallace over at our visit directly, and he would give me everything. And he, he did email me about 4 o'clock Friday and told me that, he gave me his fax number, his cell phone, and his office number. And of course, by 4 o'clock, I was too busy to do anything about it. And then I called for him today, and he's on vacation for a week. I have just some questions I want answered. This isn't personal, I'm not trying to be vindictive. I've been upfront with everybody about it. I don't know why I can't get these things, but she assured me that if I called her and go over exactly, which I think that this is a fairly plain letter as to what I'm after, I just want to see the figures. And when you have a $46,000 difference in, in, after you make a payment, that's concerning. I just want to see the financials, and it just, just show me the money. Show me where it goes. Show me what's going on. And then there's a very big question about a possible accounts receivable from the Chamber to the Convention Bureau of over $8,000. So I was trying to get a handle on that. If they've, why did they have a receivable to them? Did they borrow money from the Convention Bureau? If they did, what was, what was it used for? And, and so there again, and then I asked also, this morning, I asked if we could just have a ledger showing when the payment was made, how much was it made, what the interest, what the principal was, which I've been told by the other bankers that that's common practice. I've never had any problems with any bank giving me that kind of a ledger to showing all these payments, but I can't seem to get them. But I understand that, that he's gone on vacation for this week, and I'm talking about Mr. Wallace, and I've got an email from him that says he's going to be out of town. That's fine, but there's some serious questions I need answered. And had this not been a six-month ordeal, I don't know why I can't get this stuff, but I assure you, I don't have it. And I'm just making my, my case because she provided you all with this. I had hoped to keep all of this stuff just kind of between me and her, but apparently that's not what she wants to do, so fine. Okay, I'm not getting it. All I'm asking for is to get me what I've asked for again after six months in this May 16th letter. And when I get that, I don't have a problem with it. If it all makes sense, I'm good with it. But it, the longer it takes and the more I ask for it, and then, and I get emails that, and she also agreed to sign a letter and give it to me that would give me permission to go to Google and get the emails that I've asked for. And she says I'd have it, and I don't have it. I still don't have it. I called the city attorney, and she said she, she thought I, she would bring it tonight, so I still don't have it, but I'm supposed to get it.
Any further discussion?
Well, from my standpoint, probably the audit coming up will clear all that up, and I'd move that we do follow the
Contractor
Contract Views Recommendation, give the Chamber 60-day extension.[1797.65]
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner Hall, call or roll, please.
Harris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Nay.
Stevens?
Nay.
Agent?
Aye.
Madred?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion carries.
I want to call to your attention that the budget, the Chamber's budget came with that, I'm not sure it's in your packet. I mean, the Chamber's budget for the CDB, let me make it clear what it is. It's the Chamber's budget for the CDB, it's on your desk. Probably need to make it clear that we're also, that you're also approving the budget, if in fact you are. As I read this budget, it's for the anticipated income, and it doesn't address any fund balance on hand, and that, and that may be addressed elsewhere, but, but for the new money, this is the expected new money, this is their proposed budget. So, if you're, if you're agreeable with that, we probably need to make it clear that that's in it.
Just, Cindy, I need, I feel more comfortable relying on you having this budget, or would you feel better off putting it off to the next commission as far as approving this budget?
Well, just briefly looking at it, the income, you know, it's balanced budget, their income is the lodging surcharge. Basically, what they did with this, they've already presented a budget earlier from January.
Right.
This one, they have revised it to July to June to fit our fiscal year, and they're estimating five hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for lodging, and that's about pretty close to what I plan to do, you know. I know I've looked over the management fee, and the January budget was still forty thousand dollars
A year.
For twelve months, they're just moving it, and I, just glancing, I don't see any issue with it.
Are you saying then we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, they've already, you know, because of this year thing, you really have already approved probably July one to December thirty-first because of the way it went. It's, so, they've got budget already approved, if you want to wait, and the next time, after you get the audit and look at the audit and then approve the budget for the rest of the time, that might be something you want to do. I just don't want to leave the budget hanging and us to forget about it or whatever.
Well, I'd rather wait till we get an audit.
Yeah, I had to.
And we'll just put it back on when the audit comes and the recommendation comes back.
So, will you put that back on, you and Cindy, when you get it back?
When will the audit be ready and completed and done, or do we know?
They're supposed to have it by the board documents, they need to have it, the Chamber needs to have it by the July meeting. That's going to probably be pushing it. I would say, my estimate's probably about sixty, seventy days out, sometime in July. I really think we'll get it in July, because it's May.
First August.
Beginning of August is the latest. They're a small audit, and I understand why they were having problems, because I talked to our auditors, there's a minimum charge for a lot of auditors, and it's around five thousand dollars, and because they're so small, it falls below the minimum that the auditing firms will want to take.
Okay, then we'll move on. We called to roll and that passed. Let's move to item number eleven, public hearing and presentation of the budget for FY two thirteen to fourteen for the City of Shawnee. At this time, I will open a public hearing in this matter and take any comments.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the introduction. This is one of the required public hearings that we have, that we advertise for in the New Star. We all saw this on, on May sixth, so we won't belabor the point, since there's a large crowd in the audience that's just very riveting and interested in this particular agenda Cindy and I will double team this and we'll try to make it as painless as possible. Existing conditions, commissioners, we have big decisions to make about our revenue projections. Items number eleven and twelve deal with budget and sales tax, and rather than take that one separately, although if you have some questions about it, Cindy certainly be able to answer them, this year's sales tax projections were down a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
This month.
This, this, for the month of May, the check that we get for the month of May. Out of the last five months, that's the third month that we've seen that's down. So, that's a little unnerving to us who are trying to propose thirteen and fourteen months out what our revenues are going to be.
Well, ours are not the only ones that way.
That's true.
Midwest City, Oklahoma City, and everyone's trying to figure out what they can do.
That's true. I call it the new normal. I don't know exactly what that means, but we're not seeing the robust growth that we did in the nineties and two thousands where we were seeing five, eight, ten percent growth in our sales tax. This year, we progress, we, we planned for two percent growth, and we're really not even seeing that. The only reason we're somewhere near it was because of St. Anthony Hospital sale. So, we've still got one more month in the sales tax of our twelve months for the year. I hope it'll be more bright than it is now. No new growth is proposed in this budget. Why? We think federal sequestration could have something to do with it. Midwest City, Dell City, Oklahoma City, Enid, Shawnee, we're all, Macau, we're all kind of affected by that because there's a lot of military operations. What's that mean? About twenty percent decrease in pay for the people that are civilian employees at those places. What we heard at SEDF a couple of months ago was about a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars worth in money that's not flowing through our area, and I think what ends up is going to happen is what, what I've talked about with some of my other cohorts in cities that neighbor us, you know, that they're still paying the house payment, they're still making the car payment, they're still buying groceries, but they're probably not buying new blue jeans and new gym shoes, so. Additional information, housing starts are strong, as Mary Ann presented, court fines and fees are very strong, our franchise fees are strong. When it gets hot, people use a lot more electricity, when they use more electricity, they pay more for their franchise fees. So, we saw growth in those revenues last year. Three years into a five-year rate stabilization plan with, with SMA, those particular revenues are good and strong. Fund balance, two hot summers, to come as a customer, completed capital projects under budget, collections and light fees are strong, Kickapoo Street, water line repair, all good indications that we are on a good path with SMA. So, having said those things, real quickly governmental budgeting, we must present a balanced budget to you all. You have to adopt a budget, a balanced budget before the end of June. What's that mean? Our income needs to, it needs to equal our outgo. If we show fund balance in there or some sort of contingency to balance the general fund budget, we have to present a bed, a balanced budget to you all, and you guys have to adopt it. SMA, on the other hand, is not that way, although we do present a balanced budget because it provides a good guide for us throughout the year. At this point, I'll turn it over to Cindy for the rest of this guy.
We're going to keep this brief because we've gone through this
Few times.
Huh?
Few times.
Yes, a few times. Um, my glasses. It's not on, I'm going to see some of them. The sales tax, um, let's see. We're going to buy this up three different, we're going to do general fund, capital, and some of the other funds, SMA and the airport authority will be done during their agendas. Sales tax, as you can see, the last few years, sales tax has not grown that much. As Brian stated, we have estimated that it's going to be flat next year. As he said, our budget was, our sales tax this month collection was a hundred and forty. Before we adopt the next budget, we should get our sales tax figures around June ninth. They have to be in the bank body, so I'll know by the next June seventeenth, the public hearing, what our sales tax are going to look. Hopefully, they remain flat and not another a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Your case presumed, we may have to look at other options.
Could we dim a light? Maybe I could see that one a little bit better.
Yeah.
I can't see what that first, is the first bar.
Is that him, John?
No, not really. Can you all see it?
Well, this, I think, right up here is our
These aren't working.
That worked.
Okay, these are the total revenues as the last few years. These two slides are dark, I couldn't get them back to being white, so the, the rest of it's, but it starts at two thousand and nine, we were proposing for next year. As you can see, the revenues throughout the years have been pretty fat, flat. We're just about, twenty million dollars we're proposing for next year, nineteen million Some of the major funds we budgeted for are general fund, capital, streets, SMA and Shawnee Airport Authority. SMA and the authority are enterprise funds, basically they're staying alone, they, their revenues are based on rates. Other funds, I won't go into my way unless you have any questions about the other funds. These are some of the small funds. The street and alley fund is one that unfortunately, we do not get enough money to fund that completely for all the streetlights, so the general fund does have to supplement, and that's about eighty thousand dollars a year. The nine-one-one fund, those are all the nine-one-one fees that we collect. General fund assumptions, kept current staff, full-time staffing the same for fiscal year. We did add two part-time positions in finance, basically it's going to be a twenty-hour, a week job for two people. That way, we don't have to pay benefits, and that would be for business licenses. If we decide to go ahead with business license, we're going to need the staff to implement that. So, right now, it's budgeted for, but we wanted job share, and so we save on benefits. Insurance contribution, we're keeping, remain constant, and retirement right now in the budget is based on the new actuary study, which is twenty-one point five nine percent. With, the general fund right now is, the assumptions are raises, there is no COLA or no merits allocated at all this year. Workman's comp rates are based on industry standard rates versus a percentage, and property insurance is actually correctly allocated to each department. I take each vehicle, each building and do the budget to each department. The general fund revenue is nineteen point seven million dollars, taxes are seventy, about seventy-four point three nine percent, and then it considers sales tax, use tax, alcohol and cigarette tax, and franchise fees. The air governmental, it's the grant revenues, the Unzor grant's about ninety-one thousand dollars a year, we're just a pass group, we spend on the Unzor group. The COPS grant, we are in the third year of the COPS grant, and that was a grant for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, so we're budgeted this year the last hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Next year, we, we have to learn, figure out a couple additional. License and permits is about one point two percent, fines, which is Mary Ann's, ports, and she just went over, and I would, personally, I would also like to see the old warrants getting off books because there's a lot, and we actually write off ninety percent of them anyways on our books, so, you know, for, you know, so I'm very happy on that one. Other revenue, just Tower, Reynolds, Gas and Rollties, the transfer, there was a loan, I think there's about nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, the SMA owes the general fund, and we're paying it back in an increment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Transfer from SMA is about one point one million, which is our administration fees, and the transfer from the police and fire and the street procurement, the street's fire is part of the sales tax, and the transfer of street and procurement, a hundred thousand. These are the different department expenses, as you can see, police and fire, which is obvious, is the largest department, so they actually take about eleven million dollars of the nineteen point seven. And as you see, the very bottom line, after salaries and operational, there's eighty-eight thousand dollars left in revenue and expense, and that does take in effect no COLA, no rate, you know, no COLA, no merits. The percentage of the overall budget, this is staggering, our personal services eighty-one and a half percent, material supplies four point two six, and other services is fourteen percent, that's out of contracted services. One of the things is the contract review is out of the city manager's budget, the auditing, some of it's mine, it's spread out to the department, but majority of the operations is the personal services, which is eighty-one and a half percent. General fund capital, third penny, this is, this is the old way, do you want me to go over that? No, that's, that was, this is the way we did this year, we took out the debt service, but we, this is what we're proposing for two thousand and fourteen, going back to the original streets, street, three oh two fund, we'll get forty-three point seven five percent. Last, this year, we had budgeted some of the pool and the tower debt service out of streets, but we have taken that out of streets and putting it in three oh one. The general fund will be down to, general fund capital will be back to the thirty-eight point seven five. Economic development is five percent still, and police and fire has remained untouched. Why, do you want to talk about capital or you want me to? Okay. Why, because of South Kickapoo reconstruction, the estimated project cost is ten billion, we are estimating that the city contribution be four million. When we did the Kickapoo project, street department paid one point eight million dollars for the water line, and we recommend paying that back to the street fund, six hundred thousand dollar increments. One of the reasons, it will take about three years to find out exactly when it's done, how much, it could be a little bit less, it could be a little bit more, and the third year out, we can go ahead and ju, adjust. The shortfall for the project that we, we would need for spur to feral is one point four two million dollars. Here is the city contribution of four million, North Kickapoo fund balance, there's money left over, nine, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the three years, that's six hundred thousand, it's one point eight million, and street fund for three years will budget four hundred and six thousand dollars to be put aside for the Kickapoo project, so we can continue it.
Now, if you don't mind, well, do we have to have that money before they start that project?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we're at least three years out, but isn't it, aren't the projections that they could be on it a lot quicker than that, than three years from now? If we had the money in there, is that right?
I mean, we, we haven't bought any right of way, we haven't done anything, so
That takes some time.
It takes time.
I don't think you'll be able to start that within three years.
Okay.
We just want Kickapoo, we just want the Kickapoo
We're still in the, we're still in the preliminary planning, so it's not going to happen.
Yeah, I understand that it's going much faster than the original Kickapoo.
Yes.
Much quicker.
Because for the Kickapoo project, we have paid all our running costs.
Right.
We just, but they just asked us for that a couple months ago. It hasn't, you know, so the right of ways and all that stuff have to be done before they ask us for our share.
So, a normal timeframe would be, what, three years? Is that what you guys
Three or four.
I'm thinking three to five years, yeah.
And up to five or six.
Yeah, we hope in five, right? The third penny, the three oh one fund, the revenue is, we're going to roll over is approximately one point six at the June seventeenth, when you'll adopt the, we adopt a summary budget, so it's not so detailed, because I know all the pages I gave you was like a hundred and seventy-five pages. We'll be closer with the rollovers, it'll be closer to year end, so I'll be able to get an idea of where we're at. The new money, we estimate two point two, transfer from SMA, that is part of the loan that we paid off in SMA last year when we did the refinance for, I mean, not the refinance, the financing of the Expo Center, we also included about a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar loan for SMA. It saved them, I think, seventy thousand dollars for the five years. So, the total revenue is three point nine million. The debt service, which is the old, I divided it up into the old, which is Expo, library roof, airport, walking trail, is estimated, it's eight hundred and fifteen thousand, not estimated. The debt service for the new pool and the towers, which is all becoming out of three oh one now, is estimated around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Is that for a full year?
Yes, eight hundred debt service is full year.
Okay, so
For an eight-year loan.
Okay, so, but when would the first payment actually have to be made?
If we finance it in August, probably January. We may not use it all next year.
Yeah, okay.
But if, for some reason, if the financing goes very quickly, we could get to it.
Is there some way that you could defer maybe when, when you refinance that for a few months to get money to do some of the things that are being cut?
Um, it's not a refinance, it's to, it's to get money for the pool and the towers.
Yes, right, I understand, but we had a lot of cuts from the three oh one fund, things that were going to be funded, that were cut, and I was just wondering if we could kind of play around with that figure a little bit to see if, maybe we could put some of those other things back in.
My recommendation is, let's see, we haven't gotten the exact, when we need towers, we may come back in January and say, guess what, we only need half that debt service, let's go ahead and do some of the other projects.
Okay.
Well, we have debt service that was included in last year, but it's available.
And that, that shows in the revenue rollover.
Right.
And there's a few other things that, you know, I was just told recently, oh, I'm not going to get to before the end of the year, or, yes, I am going to get to it, so that, you know, that, we don't have to technically close our books until September thirtieth.
Yeah.
That actually, and after you have first, if it's uncommitted, that's when it rolls over.
Right, and what we do is any rollovers, I do a budget amendment anyways, if there's additional, so.
Okay.
Because I will know some things, they have all intention of getting it done by November thirtieth.
But it doesn't
It doesn't happen because of weather or It doesn't happen, because of weather, or tornadoes, or whatever.
Well, if the money's encumbered, then that means that it'll have to set aside in like...
Yeah, and then what I do is, I do a housekeeping, then, and take all the POs that I allow to rollover. I do not allow any operational. It has to be capital. So, the endings are balanced, this was not updated this time. What we did was, we had an additional, estimated right now, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, and we put it back in the wayfinding, right now. I didn't update, I forgot about that slide.
Well, we'd like to, on the wayfinding, I'd like to see that anyhow, for the Expo, with, I think Justin and Mayor talked about a little bit, anyhow, I'd like to see that done, so we can, you know, so that we can have that part of it behind us, and the, and the visitor bureau has money set up for that, so I'd like to see us match that, so we can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, because we originally wanted about three-hundred thousand for the wayfinding, but, if there's any name left over, maybe that's one of the projects that we can work on.
Well, once the pool is completed, then I'd like to see money to go into that, to direct people to the downtown, and down to the pool area.
But you have, and it's important people understand, that this is just a working document, and it can be changed at any given time. In any of the big projects, we come back anyways, asking to do it. These are some of the cuts. With the wayfinding, we put a hundred-one, one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars back. We went through this the last time, and hopefully, if there's things change, revenue change, or we don't need all of debt service, or maybe the rollovers will have some excess money in fund balance, we may be able to do some of these. But anything that we did increase, we would be bringing back to the commission anyways. But it's a little early to find out exactly where I'm at, you know, they say they're going to, like, Mike Jackson, he has fifty-one thousand dollars that I didn't include in here, because I thought he was going to finish, but now I will, so I will be doing a housekeeping for him to rollover. Some here, some of the other, we, we cut 1.1 million dollars this year from the request. The municipal auditorium air, we still, we had originally 500,000, we put 250 to get design and get it going, and next year, we'll have to finish it. Any questions? I know I went through that real fast, because you have all the...
I have a question. You know, I was about to die of a heart attack, when I was watching Channel Four, and they were saying that the tornado was headed for the mall. I'm serious. I mean, that, that, we have no idea what that would do to us and our city budget, because that's...
That's right.
So, I guess, my question is, we have to have money in reserve. We have to hang on to funds to get us, we have to have a, a little bit there. What, what do we think we will have in your estimate? I know we're making all these cuts, and, and we're, I'm hearing, it looks to me like not much, and I'm thinking, what are we going to do?
We have a healthy fund balance right now.
Okay, that's okay.
But, you know, there's, there's, people don't, there is a fund balance, and there's a cash fund balance. App and save, apps, this is by law, we have to put on our books, and that's about 2.1 million dollars.
That would pay our payroll for what, three months?
Yeah, that would pay, if we got totally wiped out.
Yeah.
And people have to go find other jobs elsewhere, that would pay for their vacation, and their sick time if they retire.
Whoa.
But you have to look at, prime example of last week, how if a horrible tornado came through here, until we could rebuild, people would have to move on.
Let me, I don't know if anybody else remembers this, about four months ago, I made this statement about STRAT, like you said, James. You can buy insurance and cover the mall as an accounts receivable to the city for the loss of income of sales tax that's available out there, and I'd like for you to get a quote on that, just to show what, what can be done, because if that would have hit, it's, it's amazing what it could do to us. And it's pennies on the dollar. It's not as expensive as you can, as you can imagine, because of the fact, it's the probability.
But, well, our concentration, our heavy concentration on business is along with I-40 corridor.
Right.
I mean, if that tornado that went through Moore came through us...
Right.
There would be nothing standing there.
And, you know, I'm just asking to, if we could dig into that and get a quote on that.
I, I think that's a good, good thing to look at.
Really, in that way, our mayor would have a heart attack.
That is a scary thing, is that thing out there, that, you know, and with it's all those restaurants on the south side of I-40, and that mall, that's, that's, we're getting a ton of income.
Right.
And another thing you said about the fund balance. The GFLA, which is General Financial Officers of America, recommends a minimum of two months. Our two months of payroll is two million dollars, but they recommend all expenses. So, we're about where we, they recommend, but we really, that's the minimum, what they say, two months of operating expense. And just for perspective, our payroll is two million dollars a year, a million dollars a month.
I just needed to maybe sleep better tonight, but I, I tell you what, when you're sitting down here in that Channel Four, saying it's going for OBU and directed on the mall...
It's where I want to, you know, I want it.
How much do we, do we need for two months?
For payroll alone, it's two million dollars.
Operations, too?
Probably another million, million and a half.
For a month, or the total, two months?
For two months.
We need about three and a half.
For two months.
Three and a half to four million.
Let me follow, make a follow-up question. Do, do we know where our income comes by sectors, maybe even through different wards? Do we have that figure?
We have it in that audit report that showed by, by, I don't know if you saw the audit report, it said, how much came from lodging, how came out of building, food? That's once a year out of the...
Well, what I'm saying is, geographically, do we have, do we have an idea, or can we get that?
If you can't know the name of the businesses, that's the problem. I mean, that's, that's one of the issues, we want to get the business licenses, so that we can say, this block has these businesses, and we can double-check to make sure they're paying the appropriate, I don't know, I know I'm getting off base of the budget, but, you know.
Well, that's part of this budget, and we're going to get money, and whatever it is.
We have not budgeted any revenue, I've got nothing off the top of my head, for business licenses, but we're going to charge, it's really not a revenue source. It is to help us track for police and fire, and to make sure that everybody's paying the appropriate allocation of taxes.
We're waiting to hear from you. We're waiting to hear from you on that. On the minute. Other discussion.
I know I went through that fast, but I know you've heard of these words.
That's great, that's okay, that's great.
More than once for me. I don't know if you want to go right into it. And anybody had any questions on the sales tax?
On what?
The sales tax.
How much are we down to a year now?
Well, that's item number 12. I need to close this public hearing if we're finished here.
You need to open it for public comment.
Okay.
Open the public hearing for...
Okay, I'll open this public hearing for a public comment. Being no public comment, then I will close that public comment, and I will now close the public hearing. No action taken, so we'll move to item number 12. Now, here we are. Acknowledged sales tax report.
On June 17th, Joe, oh, wait a minute. On June 17th, we'll be having another public hearing to finalize the budget, because it has to be turned in and state. May sales tax receipts were down, now they said, one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars, or 9.64 percent. We received only 1,312,000 dollars. Overall, for the year, we're only at 2.74 percent, and that is, including the hospital sale.
Okay, Lee, you take the hospital out of there, at what percent of that is our, of our...
We're about a flat.
So, that, the windfall we got from the hospital gave us the 2.7.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Actually, 2.9, sorry, because that's just what we got. If you remove that, we're teetering along the line.
Is that tracking the same as other cities?
Some of the other cities, I've talked to more before all this happened, they have been used to seeing seven to eight percent increase. In the last few months, it's only been a 40 percent over last year, because they had, they've been growing.
But how much?
They were normally, they have been normally seeing seven to eight percent increase over the previous, the same month the previous year. The last few months, it's only been up 40, 30 percent. So, yeah, and they budgeted 5 percent.
There was an editorial in the Oklahoma City paper this morning, talking about Oklahoma City's budget, Brian and I read it, you know, and it, it said right here, May's sales tax in Oklahoma City was down 3.5 percent from a year earlier. And, you know, we keep thinking that Oklahoma City is just going wild, and it's pretty interesting, if you have yesterday's, I mean, today's Oklahoma City paper, you might want to read this here in the editorial.
That's in the Sunday pick?
No, I believe it is.
Today.
Today, Tuesday, May 28th. Thank you. Any more questions there? No action, and we will move then to the next item, presentation, 13, presentation discussion, consideration of pension choice for employees. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off this morning by presenting staff's recommendation. Jody Cox with OMRF will talk about some of them, or the finer points, the details of the pension choice, and, and Mr. Fred Bass from FPCI is here to, to finish off, to talk about the cost savings that the city's budget would see. On 418, I recommended a hard freeze of the budget, or a hard freeze of the pension plan. Why did I recommend that? I recommended that simply because, at that time, we were working under a different set of numbers. Since that point in time, we actually have, our 2013 actuarial numbers have come out. That's primarily why the recommendation has changed. The other reason why it's changed is because of the market volatility to our favor. The difference which you'll see that Fred will produce later on is about a 1 percent difference in annual costs and pension costs to us, and it's all outlined in about 12 pages that are in here. On 516, which was our city commission work session on the budget, at the very last minute, Cindy and I decided to go over real quickly an option for pension choice, and we gave some ideas in how to make that happen. The bottom line, our costs are similar to, in either one, whether the employees decide to choose pension choice, or they decide to stay with the hard freeze and take some of the options that are allowed in there. I'll call this, instead of a hard freeze, a light freeze. And by that, I mean, we're going to give the employees, if commissioners should approve it, the choice to stay in the pension plan, or to go with the plan that actually gives them the option to have a raise in pay, and things of that nature. And I know we've got several employees that are close to retirement, and the hard freeze is really difficult on them. In either one of these options, the employees are going to have to give in order to bring our pension costs down. Because I've not known several of you, but for more than just a few months, others of you several years, but for four and a half years, I've been talking about how our pension costs at 21, 22, 23 percent are just not sustainable. And given the discussion that we've had tonight about our budget figures, I think that makes it even more important for us to take a look at these. I think the only thing that I would caution you to is, to page two of my recommendation, I'll just go ahead and read it, because I think it's important for the record, not to scare anybody, but just to make sure that everybody understands it. Staff note, it's important to note here that the volatility of market earnings to the city's favor is really what is making this option for pension choice possible. It is also notable, this option does leave the city in a position of a market earning downturn, and result in our unfunded liability growing in the future. As such, staff wants to make commissioner, wants commissioners to understand that although this option is viable now, our costs are less manageable into the future under the pension choice option, due to potential for the market earnings and investments to drop from the current 12 percent back to a lesser amount at some time, increase, thus potentially increasing costs. This is, this is kind of the rub. With, with pension choice, we had to make a lot of assumptions about who would take it and who wouldn't, so the figures you're about to see are still made on a lot of moving parts and a lot of assumptions. But it does allow, particularly for our employees that are closer to the rule of 80, to be able to choose the pension choice, put a little skin in the game, take the 4.25 percent that they were putting into a DC plan, and, and stay with the pension choice and help drive down our costs. That combined with the market earnings and our new actuarial study were the three components that made that option viable. And if there's any questions, me, I'll step aside and let Jody come and talk to you about the pension choice option, and the things that'll be available with it, and the hard freeze option that employees could choose, and we take that option, and we put it back on them. We've met with them, we told them what this would do. Of course, the employees that are closer to retirement were the ones that were more concerned with it, and the ones that are not are probably more interested in a 3 percent increase in pay in their paycheck. But I'll turn it over to Jody, and, and she can, she can talk about the, the two choices that we're talking about giving employees.
Brian, let me ask a real quick question for you, Lee. If I heard you correctly, the reason we are, this choice plan is based on the market, which is up now. Is that what I'm hearing?
They're both based on, based on the market.
Okay, but this one is, the choice plan is making it a more attractive based on the market the way it is today. So, if we vote for this one, and I, I, what, we ever do, that would mean that down the road, when the market, the bottom falls out, we're back to where we are before this market rose, and that's, I think that's what I...
Even under the, even under the hard freeze, Mayor, you're still subject to your unfunded liability being subject to market earnings. So, regardless, but what you're doing here is, is you're, you're sort of taking, and these guys can talk much more intelligently about it than I can, but you're, you're allowing the employees that choose the pension, to continue the pension, they're reducing our liability by taking the 4.25 percent and infusing it into their pension to stay in it. And so, in, in some respects, you're, you're increasing the market volatility, and you're leaving more of that on the employer because of that option. But either way...
Employee or employer?
Employer. With pension choice, the employer is subject to more of the market volatility.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mike. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jody Cox with the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, and remember, we are a nonprofit group, I think that's really important, I think you've heard this spiel before, but you are our founding member, and we are honored to continue to be your provider in retirement. Last time we met was April 15th, when we originally proposed the hard freeze, and you gave us a direct order, and I appreciated it, and you said the employees were not fully informed. So, you commissioned us to make sure that all of your employees had the numbers in front of them. So, I have to compliment Fred Bass, your actuary, and Tammy, your staff member. We've got together, we came up with benefit statements, and the statements literally showed, on one hand, if we made no changes, what would their defined benefit plan look like? On the second hand, if we went with the hard freeze, what would their numbers look like? And as I reported to you in the budget review, it was met with some very mixed emotions. Some of your employees were angry, some of them felt helpless, some of them actually cried in front of me, tears ran down their faces, some were just complacent, and some actually were excited about becoming an investor and getting a raise in the hand. So, what we decided is to come back to you about the pension choice, and your city manager and I presented that last time. So, bottom line, they literally will have to choose the four and a quarter that they're putting into the retirement plan, it will either go into the defined benefit plan to help you fund the plan, so it will no longer be their money, or it will go into a defined contribution plan, which will have their, a name in their savings account. So, it does reduce that market volatility, because four and a quarter will be coming out of their paycheck to help you fund it. The other big change in the defined...
What are they paying, Mayor?
They're putting in four and a quarter into their own employee account, so this would literally reduce the employer contributions. And the other big change, if they chose to stay in the defined benefit plan, would be that their future accruals would no longer have a cost of living adjustment. That would also save you guys about 3 percent, and Fred will get into the numbers in a minute, but it literally helps you guys go from 21 percent down to 14 percent employer contributions. Worst-case scenario, everyone takes you up on it and says, I want pension choice, the employer would have to budget 14 percent. As Cindy presented tonight, that would save your budget in excess of 400,000 dollars, worst-case scenario. If they choose to go into the defined contribution plan, then the four and a quarter does go into their account balance, so it's theirs, and they would also get the 5, 10, 15 percent contribution rate from the employer as originally proposed. They also would get a raise. So, those employees that say, I don't want the pension choice, I don't want to stay in the DB plan, they will go into the DC plan as proposed and get everything that they were promised. So, again, I echo Brian in saying, it puts their skin in the game. They have to decide what they want, instead of you guys telling them, this is what's happening. They get to decide, and decide if they want a defined benefit plan and future accruals, or a defined contribution plan. Are there any questions in regards to the differences? Because before, it was a hard freeze, and we weren't giving them any choices, and they And they were only going to go into the defined contribution plan.
Does it have to have a certain amount of years to be on the pension choice?
No. That's kind of the beauty of the plan. It will be on each employee to decide if they want a defined benefit plan and future accruals, no pay raises, again, and they won't get the 5%, 10%, 15% contribution. They will continue to get their defined benefit plan. Most of your younger employees, I will say, their numbers looked really good on the defined contribution plan. They probably will go with the DC plan. But not everybody will. It will take the same amount of time to get out of the pension plan business, it just might have a bigger curve to get there.
Does the city ever get out of the pension business altogether after...
Yes, ultimately, they do, because what the other part of the proposal is, come July 1, all new employees go into the defined contribution plan. All of them will put four and a quarter into their defined contribution plan account balance, and then they will fall under the 3.69, which is 3%, 6%, and 9% employer contributions, which will also save you long-term into the future. So you guys are ultimately lowering how much you're going to be contributing in the future. But again, you'll get out of the pension business, but it will be, even with the hard freeze versus this proposed plan, it will be at the same time, it'll be when your last pensioner dies.
Now, the cost of living allowance, for someone that stays with the defined benefit plan, they still will receive a COLA for what they've accrued up to that point.
Correct, correct. It's like drawing a line in the sand. So they will still get a cost of living on the first piece of service up through that point, and then on any future piece of accrual, no COLA. And that literally saves you almost 3% of payroll. That is just a huge cost savings. So yes, they will still get, and again, it will depend on where they're at in their career. If they're closer to the end, the majority of their pension will be subject to COLA, and then it'll be just the smaller piece. This is truly a trend. We've had three other large employers that have taken away the COLA on future accruals.
You have the two slides we were working on during the budget work session?
Yes.
They're out there as well, if you want to refer.
Okay, sure. So recap. Well, I think, is this, that's the current proposal?
That's the current.
Okay. So let's go with, yeah. The pension choice would be, they'd basically be able to stay in the pension plan, but they would lose their agreed-upon salary increase. It was a 3% or 75 cents an hour. They would stop the four and a quarter going into the defined contribution plan, but it would be redirected into the defined benefit plan to immediately help the employer fund the plan. It would no longer go into their savings account. They would lose cost of living on that future accrual like we just talked about, and they would not get the 5%, 10%, 15% employer contributions into the defined contribution plan. Basically, you'd be funding their pension, and they would give that up. The other thing that we talked about was the stay bonus for the department heads. In the proposal, we're still saying that each department head, you guys still want to reward them for staying, so we're going to keep that on the table. And what it was, was $5,000 per year for the next five years, and they would vest in it after the fifth year. So if you keep the stay bonus, that's how we were proposing it. They also would become immediately vested in that if they were 65, or if they met rule of 80. But otherwise, they'd have to stay five years to incent them to stay. The city will still be subject to the market volatility, but that would be the case, even if you did the hard freeze, you still would have an unfunded liability, and you would still be subject to that market volatility. But yes, I do think the recent times in the market have actually helped you recently. New hires, no matter what, they don't have a choice. There's no future pensions, we're not promising any guaranteed lifetime checks in the future. They automatically go on the defined contribution plan, they'll put their four and a quarter into the DC plan, and you guys will only budget 3, 6, and 9. Remember, on the 3%, it's anyone that's been here less than five years. Anyone here more than five years, they get 6%, and anyone here longer than 10 years, they get 9%, and that's the new plan. So again, it is up to you, and we can have those documents prepared if you want to go forward with this plan. We can have them for your next council meeting, June 3.
If I'm hearing you correctly, this is a choice, they can choose one of the two plans? Is that what I'm hearing?
A one-time irrevocable choice.
A one-time choice. So for the people that were going to get hurt the worse, they can choose to stay where they were and not...
That's it. But they'll have to give up the four and a quarter into their savings account, and they'll have to be contributing and helping you fund the plan. So absolutely, one-time, irrevocable. We have them sign a piece of paper with blood. No, I'm just kidding. We have them sign a piece of paper, and then they make that one-time decision. And then after this, there's no election. It's future hires, no matter what, go on the new plan.
Of course, what I'm concerned about, and discussed this with Brian on the telephone, is that one of the reasons we have the employees that we have is because we do have the retirement program and the insurance program. So you start clicking away or taking away some of that incentive, then you're not going to be able to attract the same employees or the same type of employees. So I'm not sure personally that, you know, I'm ready to get out of the pension business as everybody else is, because obviously, the benefits of being able to attract, you know, good employees from having that option. So I never, you know, envisioned that we were going to get out of the pension plan totally myself. I never envisioned that at all.
And as we talked about last time, we talked about the new defined contribution plan, because we provide defined contribution plans and defined benefit plans across the state, the new plan, even with the 3.69, is competitive with other defined contribution plans. But I respect what you're saying. You're right, it is a recruiting tool today. But the solution, long-term for your budget, was to enable the current employee group to get one-time opt-in or opt-out.
Have you done any comparison on some of the employees who felt like they were going to be impacted under the defined contribution, to see if this would be better or worse?
Oh, if they choose, literally, the comparison we gave them, they knew what their numbers could be if they got to stay in the defined benefit plan. So they already have their numbers. And if they, if we went with the hard freeze...
Under this scenario?
Absolutely. It'll be identical. Their statement literally said, "If they did nothing and you get to keep your defined benefit plan, this is how much you'll get monthly in the future." And we showed them those figures. We did not anticipate cost of living adjustments on those projections. So they know exactly what they will get if they choose it. The only thing they're giving up is the four and a quarter into their employee account balance. So they already have those numbers, so they'll be able to make an educated decision, and literally, it'll come down to this. Do they want to keep their pension plan and give up a little bit of their payroll to do it, and not get that one-time raise? Or do they want the raise in hand and get the employer contributions at 5, 10, 15? And then again, it's kind of like you guys saying, "It's up to you. Now you decide this one time," and then it'll be irrevocable.
And I know, Commissioner Harrod, you were concerned about the new hires, 3.69. If, for some reason, our economic changes in the next few years, you, the commission can adjust that.
All of this is amendable in the future, absolutely. And even if you wanted to add those employees, we've had this happen, believe it or not, when they did try to get out of the defined benefit plan and things looked brighter with the budget, those employers went back and said, "We want them to go back in the defined benefit plan." So all these things can be amended in the future. That's exactly right. So, go ahead.
I was going to say, I like the idea of having the choice, either defined benefit or defined contribution. I think it's a good plan, and I think it's a fair plan. We're still competitive, you know, with other cities in the state, for sure, and I think it's good for the city.
I would say, best-case scenario for your budget is everyone says, "I want to go into the defined contribution plan." Then you would budget about 11.2% plus the one-time raise of about $288,000. Worst-case scenario, if everyone stays in the DB plan, your budget would be about 14% of payroll. So either way, it's going down from the 21%. And we don't know who's going to take us up on it and who's not, but that's kind of the range you could expect.
For clarification, if I run to the defined benefit plan, and I started to take my benefits, that's a guaranteed lifetime annuity?
Absolutely.
Okay? So all that money that's been accrued in there, whether both city contributions or my personal contributions, stays in that plan? Upon my death in an accident or whatever, all that money stays with the fund?
Yes and no, almost. It depends on how long you live. Once you're in collection status, there's a guarantee of 10 years.
Okay, 10 years certain.
So if you outlive 10 years certain, then the plan gets to keep whatever is in existence. They also can choose to cover their spouse for a lifetime, but it is reduced based on which spousal protection they take. So it literally will depend on if they chose to cover their spouse or not, but if they only chose life only, then it would be after 10 years. Yeah. But you're...
So after the 10 years, the balance is, so even if they stay, they're actually helping the fund maintain or grow maybe, because those funds have to remain in there...
That's right.
To produce income. And as long as we keep our fund balance out or up there, that's going to help generate additional income for the entire...
Absolutely. And the other thing that would help generate income, as you're stating, would be if employees are hired and they choose this one-time choice, and they go defined benefit plan, but they don't have their seven years in, and if they leave employment, they give up the right to that guarantee. So the fund wins, and then they just take their employee money plus interest. So that's exactly right. It depends on if they're vested or not vested, but they could literally give up the right to a guarantee. And again, I'd like to state to the public that any of these plan changes are not affecting your current retirees. They will continue to get what they have been promised from the city of Shawnee, and they will continue to get their cost of living increase as promised. So I don't want anyone to be alarmed in the public eye, if you're a retiree, you're going to get the promise that you guys had made to them. So none of this changes those promises.
Further discussion? Okay. If not, I don't know that, do we need, I think we're in pretty good shape. I mean, in listening, if we ask more questions, we may call you up. At this time, I would like to ask if anyone from the audience would like to make comments on this. Okay? If not, I will make a comment to say, I think going back to the drawing board by some of the commissioners on here asking us to do this, to me, sure seems like it is a more palatable thing than it was before. Again, that's just...
You're right. You're right.
Where, instead of zapping some of those people, it seems like it's more palatable, to me personally, you know? So I guess then, our next thing is, I'll entertain a motion on this item 13, is of a pension choice program for the employees.
So what? Just a minute.
Oh, okay.
Before we go, I mean, what happened with 14, 15, 16, 17, whatever was next, the items are, I mean...
We'll pass them up if we vote to pass this, right?
If you pass 13, probably you want to defeat 14, and then we'll just withdraw the ordinances, because without 14, you don't need 15, 16, and 17. So if you pass 13, then you're pretty much by implication are rejecting 14, but you need to do it formally. And then they can come back with revised documents, and we'll be in good shape.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion on item number 13, pension choice.
I make the motion that we adopt the pension choice for our city employees.
Second. And a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Call or roll, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
No.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, okay. Then I guess I will entertain a motion on item number 14. Do you want me to read it, Mary Ann, should I?
No.
No.
Just call the short version at House Election Dinner to join your agreements to establish your defined contribution plan.
Okay. You heard that. If we either vote for it, or if it doesn't pass, then it means we're back up to 13, right?
Well, if you vote for it, then we just really have a complicated situation. I'd encourage you to vote against it.
I guess what I'm trying to say, though, I want to be sure here to get that clear. So the chair will entertain a motion on this item, and the chair not getting any...
I vote that we move to deny the question, number 14.
Okay, sir. We have a motion?
I'll second.
And do we have a second about Commissioner Hall? Are you comfortable with that, Mary Ann? Okay.
We may grammatically fix it here a minute.
Okay. Okay. Call or roll, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod? Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. So we can pass up item number 15, if I'm correct.
15, 16, 17, 18.
15, 16, 17, and 18.
No action?
No action.
Okay, on all those items, okay? Let's see. Item number 19, consider bids on the Rehab Asphalt Streets project to rebid. Mr. Crowicki? Please, sir.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa! My God! We've got a young handsome man here! Wow!
Are you saying that John's not a good man?
I just want to know what hair dye you're using.
My name is Michael Lynn, I'm an assistant city engineer. John is out today, so. This award is for the contract of the Rehab Asphalt Project that we rebid. You'll find some additional information in your packet if you have questions about it. We, as staff, we're recommending the award go to High School Limb Construction in the amount of $745,711, as the lowest and best bid received. Do you have any questions?
Typical question with the commissioner is, what did we have budgeted for?
I believe, well, more than that.
Well, it finished part of the contract, so we had plenty of money due to your original contract, and we're still in negotiation on the other part of it on 45th Street.
Yeah, we are talking about 45th, correct? At least it's part of it.
The original bid had 45th in it. And we cut the project short, so we rebid the rest of the quantities.
I move with, except for the staff's recommendation.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Call or roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I was... Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number 20, any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
How about administrative reports?
One this evening. Don's going to come talk to us about where we are in the process of storm debris removal and things of that nature.
I got to tell you, folks, I'm just going to say this in front of everybody, there's some of these people in the staff, including Don and the chief and the fire department and Brian have been, and other people in here have. I'm telling you what, all you have to do is come down here and go through what I've been down here, and you will not believe the amount of work and what a good job you all have done.
Thank you. Appreciate that pretty much. Thank you. So, Don Lynch, emergency management director, just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the tornado debris removal. And you have a fact sheet in front of you at your desk that has the information on it. We're continuing with the process in the city limits area of removing debris. We have about 250 of these printed off this evening, and we have some volunteers that are coming in tomorrow and are going to go door-to-door to contact our residents in the lake area. If they're home, they will make contact with them. If not, we've got some tape, and we're going to tape this to their door and make sure that we get the word out to them that we are collecting debris from around the roadways, and we can't legally go on private property to do debris removal. So we're asking people to bring that to the side of the road, and we can pick it up there through that process. If people need help with that removal from their property, we've given them the phone number for the engineering department, and they can contact that number if they need help. We're setting up a hotline, and we'll have that established tomorrow for people who want to help, so they can call into that number, and we can message the people who want to help with the people who do need help, make sure that we get everybody covered. We've been very blessed so far this last week with numbers of folks from out of town who've been out in the areas, Commissioner AG alluded to earlier, helping in that area, but we just want to make sure that we get all of that covered, so that we will establish all of that covered, so that we will establish the hotline for people who want to help, as well as those who need help can call on this, and we'll make that information available to them. We are setting up a debris gathering and reduction site near the Twin Lakes, and there's a map on the back for that, so that the wooded debris is the only thing that we can burn, vegetated debris is the only thing that's allowed to be burned under Oklahoma law, and so we're going to gather that there as much as possible. Anything else, if it's construction, household hazardous waste, or a mixed debris, because you can't separate it out, in some places that is the case, that'll have to go to the landfill to be disposed of in that way. But the vegetated debris, we're going to reduce and take care of there west of Lake Number One. So that information is on here. We're continuing those operations, and we'll be, as quickly as possible, where our goal is to get this done within the first 30 days. It's a benefit to the citizens to get it removed, to get it out there, get on with it, it's a benefit to us, so that it doesn't create public health concerns out there and get everything back in shape. And so our goal is to do that as much as possible. I will be back on the agenda for your next regular meeting to allow us to also advertise for a debris removal contractor. That way, it will be in place should we need it as part of this process or in any future operations. We'll have that for a year set up in case anything else happens. We'll have that automatically in place and be ready to go at that point. So that's one agenda item that we'll have for you on Monday night.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know the Chief, Fire Chief, indicated the burning rules.
Correct.
And I guess I think about some of the people that I've visited out on the lake and some of the elderly, I'm not sure they would have those rules, and I'm wondering if we might print something that could go along with this handout. I'm just asking that question.
Chief, you want to address that?
How we get to them, or maybe you already figured that out. I just want to be sure they knew they could do it, but they need to get permission and all that.
Mr. Mayor, we would be happy to do that. Those rules are printed on each one of the burn permits that we issue to each people, so, or to each person. If we need to do that, we'll be happy to do that.
I'm just asking that question, y'all know more about that, but I just think about some of those people may not even know that they can burn, you know, because their communication, some of those elderly people out there is real weak as far as being able to internet and Facebook and all those kind of things.
Are we charging for the burn permits?
No, we're not.
Thank you.
No, we waived it. And we have given out numbers that they can call, and we'll actually bring one to them. We would like to, for them to have a burn permit, and that way, we have an opportunity to inspect the site, where that we know that it's within regulations and rules. Once again, we would encourage the fact that per DEQ, the only thing we're allowed to burn legally is trees. So if you've seen a lot of black, real black smoke recently, a lot of that is coming from outside of our city limits, which we have no jurisdiction in that area. But that is an illegal burn if it has the black in it, so tree limbs only.
Well, I just thought, if we're going to be visiting each one of those sites, maybe just one more little piece of paper, it's 90 or 100 pieces, would tell them about burning or something, it's just a crazy thought.
One more thing I would like to just pass on, and it does state on each one of our burn permits, the different regulations. One thing I would encourage during this time of the year, 20 miles an hour is the maximum wind speed. It should be put out if the wind exceeds that, if it looks like it's going to be close. I would say, really, in all honesty, 10 to 15 is probably more than what we need as far as wind speed at the time we start a burn, but definitely if it's close to 20, just say no.
Can Mrs. Jones call down here and get the wind speed? I'm serious, how's she going to know out there, her and her husband?
The weather, the weatherman tells you.
Well, okay.
Weather, weather channel has it with the, you call it in the office, we'll be in touch.
But Chief, one more thing, and I've had a burn permit, just the fact that it's, you've had lots of rain and lots of, things can still catch fire easily, very easily, so...
Absolutely, and when people start a good-sized fire, and even though the grass might be green around it, it's not long before it's dried because of the radiant heat coming from the fire. We need the utmost care when we do.
I got a question, too. Don, you might know this, like, what's the dollar amount of damage to the City of Shawnee?
We don't, we don't figure dollar amounts, we figure in terms of structural damage. It's a matter between the private homeowner, their insurance carrier, or their mortgageholder. We don't assess a dollar figure on there. The county assessor will come back and make an assessment later on that and adjust their taxes accordingly. In fact, I've been in contact with Troy today on the maps of the area that's affected, and he's working with that right now. But we don't put a dollar figure on there because we're not appraisers on those values, so.
Are you still working with ODOT?
We are still working with ODOT, and they've been very helpful to us so far in this process, and we hope to continue that relationship.
I wanted to make sure that we mentioned that, too, thank you, Commissioner. ODOT, ODOT's got about 35 people, and that includes dump trucks and heavy equipment, and they're primarily working in the areas where the residents have had the ability, or the wherewithal, or whatever you want to call it, to get it to the right of way. So they're up in Commissioner Dennis's district now, working on some neighborhoods that were off of Garrett's Lake and 177, and working with those folks, and they'll be working their way down, too. The difference between there and here really is truly, if a house was destroyed, they push it over with a bulldozer. If you're like Commissioner AG's property is, I mean, it's trees, it's debris, it's big trees and big debris.
Big trees.
So they're having trouble getting it to the right of way, and some of those other areas have already been successful doing that. Don, did you hear about the $100,000 commitment by the Avitas Foundation?
Yes.
You want to explain that a little bit?
Yes. For those who would like to contribute monetary donations to help the victims of this disaster, they can contribute to the Potawatomi County United Way Disaster Relief Fund via Finley and Cook, in care of Finley and Cook, and that money will go to aid the victims of this disaster, and the Avitas Foundation has stepped up to match, dollar for dollar, the first $100,000 that has been, will be contributed to that fund, and so we, that's, the Avitas Foundation, by the way, for those who may not know, was the foundation that was set up with the proceeds from the sale of a hospital, and so we're very fortunate and pleased that they have seen to not only make a starting contribution to that fund, but to match the first $100,000 that comes in, dollar for dollar, and we appreciate that very much. And this is money that will go directly to the victims for needs, and will continue into the long-term needs. One other thing that I would just say, that we've been asked to tell people, remind folks that even if they think all of their damage has been covered and they don't need any help right now, it's important to register with FEMA and get a FEMA number. Now, in the process, there's a limited time window that you can do that, and so everybody needs to call 1-800-621-FEMA, or go online to fema.gov and register for that assistance. And it may not be that you need monetary assistance at this point, as was mentioned earlier today in one of the meetings, we talked about, some folks who lost everything, lost their tax records, and if they need to go back and help, need help recreating those tax records, the IRS is there at the FEMA Disaster Recovery Center, and they can access that, and the IRS can help them with recreating those records and things like that. So it's all the federal agencies that are involved in that process, and that's why it's important to go ahead and register. Even if you don't, in the future, need that, you will at least be in the process. So we want to remind everybody of that, and appreciate all the support from our commissioners, and mayor, and city manager, and all our city staff. Thank you.
Just one more, one more quick thing, and I've mentioned it before, and you'll probably get tired of me talking about it, but there is a creek, you know, or a ravine next to my property, and it is totally full.
Full of debris.
Trash, tornado debris, and limbs, and, you know, as that starts to decay, it's going to, it could or could not affect the water quality, I don't know, because of the amount, you know, that's a pretty big body of water, so I don't know if it would affect it or not, but somebody probably needs to look at that.
We are going to look at that. In fact, we talked about that today with James Bryce, and Frank Rollman, and Steve Nelms, and Michael Ludy, and those of us who were in the debris meeting this morning, talked about getting out on the lake and checking in those coves. I know that, my understanding is, a lot of that area was kind of like a tsunami when the water was pulled in, and then came back into those coves, it washed up a lot of trash in that area, and so we're going to be addressing that next few days.
There should be federal funds available for something like that.
That will be part of the debris removal process as well. So yeah, that would be covered under our debris removal.
Don, did we, did we ever get, or Brian, did we ever get any storage facility, warehouse for all the donated items? We've got some calls out there, Commissioner. I think the primary facility that we could get that would be ideal for us is the old postal facility for about six months. We've got an individual standing on hold that would be able to manage all of those water, Gatorade resources up there, whether it be clothing, or linens, or whatever it is, but there just isn't a whole lot out there that really is forklift-able. TDK, I talked to the plant manager up there today, she may have it or may not. So there are some things coming together, and we're going to need them here in the next week.
Old Sullivan Building on Main Street.
Yeah, we looked at that, too. Unfortunately, with tractor trailers, if we try to back a tractor trailer in there on Main Street, Commissioner, it'll stick all the way out into the street. That's meant for the short trucks, so...
Yeah, I know, it used to be deep, but they filled it in.
They filled it in.
And it's just the short, short trucks now.
Several months ago, I talked to you about trying to get grant money to build shelters for people, and you said, or FEMA told me, one or the other, it might have been you, Don, but you said, "We've got to have a disaster before we get grant money."
Correct, so we anticipate...
Are you on that?
We're absolutely, we're on that, and there will be, FEMA will set aside a pot of money equal to 10% of the final cost of all the public assistance. That's for the emergency protective measures, the debris removal, any other public assistance that we may become eligible for. There are other categories if there's other damage to infrastructure that's out there. So FEMA will, in a month or so, as we get in this disaster, when they get a good handle on what that final cost is of public assistance, they will set aside a pot of money and make it available to the state for those kinds of projects, for hazard mitigation projects. It's separate and apart from the money we get for rebuilding. It's an additional fund.
Right.
And so we're on top of that, and the state will let us know when that's available that we can move forward with. So we'll be back to you.
This gets back to Brian, I guess. The City of Moore was considering an ordinance requiring all new homes to provide, put in shelter. Did that pass, or do we know?
I don't know.
To the best of my knowledge, it has not yet.
It hasn't done yet.
That might be something we want to might consider, I don't know.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, at this time, I'm going to recess our city commission and convene the Shawnee Municipal Authority. We do have a quorum, so item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So, my...
A motion by Commissioner Harrod, go ahead, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Call and roll, please.
Harrod?
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two is a public hearing and presentation of the budget for the year 1314 for the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I'll open that public hearing at this time.
I'll be brief. Real quick, same assumption as the general fund, coal is zero, merit is zero, retirement 21.59%. Now that we're moving forward with pension choice, we'll have to figure out down a month, a couple of months, exactly who takes and who doesn't, all that stuff. Revenues, slight increase this year, we were very conservative, we've had a very strong year, but next year, we anticipate losing to COMSA, and that will decrease the revenues about half a million dollars.
What was that comment?
Hold on one second, I have to go back, I'm sorry.
We're going to lose to COMSA.
What's the comment?
I, what was that comment, did you say?
Yeah.
Oh, we anticipate COMSA coming off, and it's about a half a million dollars, but the rate increase this year is about 470,000, so it's going to, it's going to wash, it's going to even off. So our revenues for water and sewer, we pretty much made flat, or a little...
That's going to be the last reading, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Is that going to be the last one that we budgeted for a rating? You're talking about a water...
No, there's one more, but it's very, very...
One more after this?
Yeah, there's one more after this one, it's very small. This one is relatively small, too. It's only going to generate 470,000. It's a five-year thing.
Is that in November?
Yes.
I have a question before you go on. The SMA paid off the land, the CBB, the I-40, are they being paid back for that, the SMA, or...
It's supposed to come out of their money, isn't it? That's one thing, that's not in the budget, their budget.
Whatever their monthly payment was, it's mine, or something.
About 1,800 bucks, I think it is.
It's going to pay off that.
Should that show as revenue here, or...
Yeah, it's, I think I put it in Missland, so, but I can, for the final, we'll break it out for you.
Okay.
Some of the capital expenses, we have a million dollars in water line distribution, and a million dollars into the sewer line, a 12-year dump truck, the clean the fudge town. These are some of the big capital items, and then they, obviously, they have some in your, and I apologize, I did leave out the SMA last week, but I think I sent it separate, under separate cover. What did I do? Okay. This is the big one for SMA. We did, we refinanced the West Watkins, as you know, we did a three-year cliff, a $500,000 more for the next three years. The principal and interest for SMA will be about 2.8 million dollars, which is, includes that additional 500. We're transferring, as we spoke by the general fund, 1.1 million dollars for administration fee, 250,000 repayment of the loan, 150 for capital to refinance an old loan, and we're moving 600,000 to repay street for the water line portion of Kickapoo. And then, in streets, we didn't really talk about streets too much earlier, John estimates that there's a downtown project, and 350,000 of it will be the water line, so we're going to transfer that money, so the SMA pays for the water line for the downtown. If anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. We're putting money away for the Kickapoo Street project. Are there any utilities under there that would have to come out of the SMA? I mean, I know this is not for next year, but we're starting to put money away in anticipation of that, you know, out of the general fund or the capital, capital fund.
We'll have to address that more when we get the figures, we figure the whole project's going to cost about 20 million dollars, right, is that?
Yeah, I mean, we, there may be an adjustment of SMA's contribution to the South Kickapoo project, once we get a little bit closer to where those project costs will be.
Okay.
We're just planning ahead.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? Then you'll have a resolution to adopt it at the June 17 meeting.
Yep, any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I think you actually have to open the public hearing and close the public hearing.
I thought I did, I'm sorry.
I think you opened it.
I opened it, that's okay. No comments further than, I'll close the public hearing with no action. Item number three, consider bids, water meters and vault structure project, contract number SMA 1306, staff recommendation.
Who's the shusel?
Where's your boot?
He's the shusel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This bid was opened up at the last commission meeting. We recommend awarding the project officially to Jordan Contractors for the water meter vault project. He is probably eight to 10 weeks out on the mag meter, and four to six weeks, four to six weeks out for delivery of the eight-inch turbine meters for the water line.
We have a recommendation by staff, or the Chair will entertain a motion.
I move we accept the staff recommendation and award.
Second.
We have a motion, and I have a second by Commissioner. Winteringer, call and roll, please.
Hall?
Aye.
Winteringer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B, sale and removal of 150-pound negative pressure ozone system. I didn't know, I wondered about that when I saw this on here.
Here you go, James, you voted for getting that 3 million, and we're on in now, here's what you made.
You're right. I was the last to vote.
We have received one bid for the sale and removal of the ozone equipment, and it is from Fisher Ferry Water District, Pittsburgh, Mississippi, for 77,000 dollars.
Does that mean they'll take it all? You don't have to do anything?
They'll take it all.
If that is cheap as that bid is?
Yeah.
And there's not going to be any cost on our part associated with that?
No.
Okay.
I move we accept the bid.
Well, no, we can't do that. I think we need to defer this to the next meeting.
Why?
You have to defer it, it just shows up in the judicial order.
Yeah, some kind of rule, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion to defer it to the next meeting.
Aye.
Motion to defer. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Call and roll, please.
Aye.
Hall?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
AG?
Aye.
Harrod?
Aye.
Maynard?
Aye.
Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, no new business this evening.
Administrative reports?
Just have one, sir.
Okay, sir.
Just real quick, this is our annual consumer confidence report. These are results for the 2012 year, January to December. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just like, these, these, this report will be going out in the water bills, May water bill will be in the June, they'll probably get them in June, and we did not, we were in compliance the entire year and did not bust any limits with the water fence.
Very good.
Very good.
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Is the water gonna start tasting better as everybody else is tasting better and mine's not?
No, mine's tasting bad too.
I thought that was by myself.
Yeah, we're making minor adjustments at the plant and then the lake length ratio, and we're hoping it'll.
Settle down.
Settle down, so.
I have a question, did the lake level go down when I saw it on TV, it looked like it was sucking a ton of water out of our lake?
It probably did when the tornado was over the lake, but we did not lose any water out of the lake, so.
How was that again?
When the, we're assuming when the tornado was over the lake, maybe pulled some water up and then dropped it back down.
Or did it dropped it back in the lake, could that cause part of the stirrup of?
Oh, yes.
Didn't help it, did it?
Yeah, it didn't help.
Wow.
That's some mixed water.
That sure is, thank you. Okay, if there are further administrative reports, then we will adjourn this and move to the Shawnee Airport Authority, having quorum, we will consider approval of the consent agenda, do I have a motion by Commissioner Harrod, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, call and roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, a public hearing and presentation of the budget for the year twenty thirteen fourteen for the Shawnee Airport Authority, I'll open the public hearing at this time.
This will be real brief. Okay, the Shawnee Airport Authority, revenue base are, the revenues are based on hanging rentals, gasoline and jet fuel sales, basically our biggest, the overall, let me back up, the overall budget is only five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, basically it is salaries and fuel, and then it is generated, my mind's going blank, I'm sorry, the revenues are based on jet fuels and gasoline, in the, with the new airport terminal, as you can see, it's hard to tell, but in two thousand and nine, our sales were only about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for fuel and aviation fuel, now we're hitting about two hundred and fifty to two hundred, or, excuse me, three hundred thousand dollars, so the sale is, you know, the sales are way up, and Rex, what is the gas prices right now that we're selling it?
Five fifty for at gas and forty for ten.
So, their budget's very thin, let me go back to the, doesn't wanna roll, right now, there's only seventeen thousand budgeted in the capital, that's all the money they have left over for next year, and that's gonna be for hanging repair and security cameras, because we've had some damage out there, you know, with the lights and stuff like that vandalism, so we'd like to get some security cameras. Any questions? Guinea budget.
Any questions for her, I'll take, any comments at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing with no action, okay? Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Okay, then I'll adjourn this meeting and return to the city commission meeting. Item number twenty-two is consider an executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the IUPA local, I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Harrod, do we have a second?
Second.
Call and roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do I need to read either item two, item number twenty-three is consider an executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the IFF local two oh six, chair will entertain a motion for that.
I'll move it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harrod?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Smith, call and roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
AG.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, this time we'll go into executive session.
Clear.
Where are we gonna go, Brian? I'm on, we returned from the executive session, I'm on announce no discussion other than items posted and no action taken in executive session, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call and roll please. Pick somebody, pick somebody, James and Commissioner Hall.
We skipped a couple there, but that's okay.
We're good.
Okay, motion to adjourn was, I'm sorry.
James, I second.
Okay, sorry.
All right, Harrod.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.